Assistant Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for February 5th, 2019. This is our 4:00 PM study session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmembers of all?
Present.
Mayor Potempi?
Present.
And Mayor Mattis.
Present.
All right, our study session today is a...we only have one item on our study session today. It's to continue from January 15, 2019 meeting. It's the General Plan Preferred Alternative Land Use Map. We're gonna have a staff report. We'll have questions from the City Council. We'll get into this as requested, and then we'll take some public comments and close this session out. Our report's gonna be given by our Community Development Director, Rebecca Demme. She's over here.
I'm gonna sit over here so I can move the map around as needed for you guys and zoom in, zoom out on the city map. Again, this was forwarded from the last council meeting to discuss the draft land use plan. The general plan land use designations indicate the location and extent of development of land uses throughout the city and the intensity and population density of development. A general plan provides a set of broad policies that establish the basis for future land use development patterns and regulations in the city. The city zoning ordinance, which would come after, give you the specific regulations about how property owners may use and develop their land consistent with the general plan and land use map, while complying with the federal, state, regional, and local laws and regulations. So at the top, our biggest broad policy is the general plan. Then, specific plans and the zoning ordinance kind of define the different uses that are allowed within those land uses. And then, the implementation tools, which are subdivision maps, conditional use permits, development permits. And then, lastly, the actual building, which is grading permits and building permits. So it goes from long-term to short-term. The general plan has multiple elements in it. I have the slide here showing all the different elements. However, today, we're specifically talking about land use and the land use plan. The land use plan will include things that show, as I mentioned, the type of intensity and density allowed. So it kind of gives you, on commercial and industrial, the kind of floor area ratio and lot coverage that's allowed. And in residential, the number of units per acre that's permitted. As an example, on a zoning designation versus a general plan, you might have a commercial general plan designation, but our zoning designation might break it up. It might have commercial highway serving, where you have uses that are specifically allowed in highway-serving properties. And then, you might have commercial neighborhood, which allow different types of uses. But they would both be considered commercial on the general plan. And in the zoning map, it would split up those allowable uses more to the exact kind of locations that we want to try and see development. So we have the presented land use alternative map. This map kind of gives you a narrow idea of just the MSHCP areas. We kind of wanted to pull that out to show you guys the MSHCP areas and what's designated within them. These give you the land use legend. As mentioned, the different land uses have different densities allowed. Rural residential desert allows for one dwelling unit per five acres. Low residential allows up to six units per acre. Residential medium allows up to 20 units per acre. And residential high is between 15 and 30 units per acre. So...and then, there's also like mixed use, which gives you a combination of commercial and residential. And then, industrial, open space, and commercial. The visitor-serving slash residential is another specific type of mixed use designation. It will allow either visitor-serving commercial or residential uses, which will be further defined through the zoning ordinance, what can be permitted where and on what size lots are needed to do certain types of projects. So I provided you a larger map of the requested changes. The top map you have in front of you is the broad map. The second page is the same map, but with the identified changes pointed out from a citywide perspective, along with the handout that was provided in the staff report, which shows the detail of each lot and the requests. So we'll go into the requests one by one. The first request is a request based on a discussion we had and an application that you guys reviewed previously for a zone change to industrial from My Desert Garage. It was tabled from an official determination from council, but it was brought back as part of the general plan because the previous discussion, there was concerns regarding zoning something industrial and having it allow for cannabis uses in an area we did not want cannabis uses. However, if you could see on the larger map I provided, there's a bright green line around the industrial areas that are to the south, and that's the cultivation overlay. So if this request were to be approved, it would not be within the cultivation overlay, and so therefore would not allow any kind of cultivation cannabis activities on this site. So...
Is there any...I wanted to take each request, so we don't get so far ahead, we have to go back. So I want to take each request individually. So is there any questions on this? I don't have a screen up right now, so you just have to kind of jump in.
Two questions, really quick. When you say cannabis use wouldn't be allowed if we zoned that as light industrial, because it falls outside of the green zone, how firm is that? I guess I should say, I mean, is it more difficult to move the boundaries of the green zone? Or is it more difficult to change this here, leave this here, or change it as part of the zoning process? Does that make sense?
A little bit. So to change it as part of the zoning process, it would have to come back for another general plan amendment. Because the zoning map has to comply with the general plan, we would not be able to permit, say, a commercial designation, and then on the zoning map, put it as residential or industrial. So the zoning map can only further define the type of industrial or the type of commercial, but couldn't be in conflict with the general plan map. So if it's not changed here, it would have to come back through a general plan amendment process.
But let's assume we change it to light industrial. How difficult is it to move the boundary of the green zone?
It's the same general plan amendment process and public hearing.
Okay. The second question is for our city attorney. Since this was one that I handled when I was on the planning commission, are we...if we lump these together or take them individually, am I gonna have to walk away from this one for a little bit?
I would probably say no. This is the entire general plan update. However, you could probably vote on this land use. What was before you was an actual application for a general planned amendment. So that application, as I understand, has been tabled totally. So currently, in a way, there's no more application. So for this item, I would say that it would be okay for you to vote kind of in mass with the other council members on the general plan amendment, considering there's no more application...there's no underlying application.
Okay. So that would, I guess, would leave it up to how the mayor intends to do these, if we are going to vote on these one by one, or if you're gonna vote on them as a package?
I would like to take one motion at the end of this to vote on everything after the comments are made on the specific request and a consensus is met, so that Rebecca has enough information to move forth.
So you're envisioning one big motion at the end for all nine of these?
Yes. Well, actually, the whole general plan is either request, and in the motion would include the request, yes.
So...
So let's do this. Let's see if we find consensus. And if we get into a point where we're not finding consensus, then maybe we can pull that item out separately.
Okay, thanks.
Could I weigh in quickly? Yeah, absolutely.
I would think that on this one, this is the general plan, and this is one time where if we all have to recuse ourselves based on specific areas where we've had...where we've touched, it's not gonna work. So I can't see as you would have any kind of conflict.
Yeah, I don't think any of us believe you'd have any conflict.
Okay. So then, essentially, on that line too, I have a couple...there's one other request here further down on the list that came from an individual that gave me more than 500 on my election campaign. So if we do that as a mass motion, I could recuse myself from that one vote. Or if you take it out singly, I could recuse myself.
When we get there, let us know. We can make a decision at that point. Any more comments on request one? No more from Mr. Gardner, anyone else? Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to request number one? Request number one is the property at the corner of Dylan and Palm Drive. If you do speak on this, once you start your three minutes, you'll need to finish your three minutes, and that'll be your only time to speak. You can hold it general.
Just a general comment. Is that better? Mark Fredenberg, my wife Elizabeth here and her sister and husband, the four of us own the 20 acres at the corner of Palm and Dylan. And just 20 acres, it would be on the southeast corner, southeast corner of Palm and Dylan. Just go on record that we're in favor of having it go commercial. And that's about all I need to say.
Thank you.
Just want to be on record.
All right. Any more questions on request number one? All right, we'll move on to request number two. Do you still want to make comment on this, Ted? Once you begin, this will be your three minutes.
I'm speaking on the south side of Palm and the west side of...
Sure.
No, I'm sorry, on the south side of Dylan, the west side of Palm Drive. Which one?
West side. West of Palm.
Yes, west of Palm, between two bunch palms, Dylan Road. There's a housing development down there. Been there for about 25 years. It's in a wash area. The council wants to...or the general plan, I should say, stating to rezone that from rural to residential still. I believe it should all go to commercial. There's never gonna be houses built there because it isn't a wash area. They would have to have the raised foundations put in. You would have to pay an extra 100 a month in FEMA insurance. Block walls would have to go in. It just wouldn't be cost prohibitive for anybody to do anything there with residential, which may be the reason why for the last 25 years, the streets have been there, and nobody's built a house there. So to surround that neighborhood with commercial, light industrial, doesn't make any sense either. Obviously, nobody's wanted to do anything there. Their weeds are growing through the asphalt. There's big potholes there. And I'm opposed to it being changed. It should either just stay the same as it is now or all of it go to commercial or light industrial. So that's all I have to say about that. And if I may, Mayor Mattis, I would like to bring to the attention that the sign up at the Veterans Park is blowing apart and probably won't be there in the morning.
Thank you very much, Ted. Rebecca, we'll move on. Request number...
I have one question.
Oh, no, she...we have a question from the councilman.
So on that first request, I see here that it's listed on the map, and there's like a little arrow that's pointing, and it says request number one. Is that the full...is that encompassing the full 78 acres?
So the request...
Because that doesn't look...because from December, when we had this, I recall that this property actually runs from Dylan to 18th Street. But it looks here like this is just centered around Dylan.
Yes. I apologize. The detail is on the actual request. This big map just kind of gives you the general area. But if you look at the request number one, either in the presentation or in your packet, it'll have the detail of the full area proposed to go industrial, which runs all the way from Dylan to the street below.
Mr. Mayor, I'm certain everybody knows where this parcel is on the map, but I don't. I can't figure out what we're talking...can you point that out with like some cross streets that I can recognize so I can figure out what we're talking about? That doesn't look like anything that's on my map.
Dylan and...sorry, oops.
Yeah, like the full thing, from Dylan to 18th Street.
So that's right here. Dylan is right here?
Okay.
Right. I'm sorry. I don't have a way to...
It doesn't look like that on the map that we've got in front of us on paper.
No, they're requesting it be changed. That's not the proposal.
Where is 18th Street?
If you look at the presentation, it's where the industrial stops to the south on the presentation. The map you have does not include the requested designations, just gives you the location of each request within the packet.
So somebody spoke, said they want to see the entire thing commercial. So I look down here at this, and it looks like almost all of it's commercial. And then, I look on my screen, and I see this like odd shaped of red and blue, and then another section of red over there. Which one am I looking at?
So the one in the map is what was previously presented to you at the last meeting. The one on the presentation is what the landowners had requested you to change it to.
Okay. So the person who spoke, Mr. Fredenberg, is it?
And I believe he said the west side. And the west side shows mixed use and commercial.
So he's still at the corner there where it's red still?
The southeast corner that he owns is shown in the corner as completely commercial.
He shows all red on my map.
It is shown completely as commercial. Let me pull it up on this map. Hold on.
There we go. Now you're out a little bit further, and I can see what we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay, so put your cursor somewhere and leave it there so we can see what it is.
Hold on, I'm trying to get to the area. Give me a second. So here we go.
That's good.
So...
You can back up a little bit.
The person that spoke is talking about this corner, which on the proposal and the request is proposed to stay commercial. The industrial piece that is owned by the other property owner from My Desert Garage wanted to change his other back piece here to light industrial. So the entire corner would stay commercial, per the speaker's request. And then, the back would go to industrial, as shown on the detailed map.
That corner that's closest to the intersection, right there, that is approximately, what, 15 acres? The size of a Kmart shopping center?
That one is...oh, I don't have a size. Give me one second.
How many acres is your property?
20.
It's 20.
20. So that's...it would be a big shopping center that would go in there, right?
Yeah, I got about half of it, so about 20.
Okay. So that...and just for...put that perspective, that's about...that's bigger than what the Kmart shopping center is, including...
So with the light industrial request, you would still have 20 acres at the corner for commercial, as well as, I believe it was 20 feet along Palm.
And when we say Kmart shopping center, we're talking Walgreens to Starbucks to Kmart, right? So that's how big that would be. That's a pretty big chunk of that corner.
I believe this one's larger than that even.
Okay.
I have one last question. So now that we're looking here and we're seeing, okay, this is where that...not that little corner, but the other two in the back for request number one. I remember as well that with this particular project, they had mentioned that they would leave a specific amount still designated commercial. And...
Sort of right there.
When in this approval process, if we were to approve the change, that part would still stay commercial, correct?
That is correct. As we proposed in request one, you can still see a red line that would remain the frontage commercial, the same as what was previously brought to you, the same depth.
What's the reasoning for the commercial island off to the...there?
I believe it was a different owner. Yeah, I don't believe it wasn't part of the My Desert Garage proposal. But that would be your choice to change that one as well, should you wish.
Makes sense to have an island of commercial with no way to get to it except driving through a RV storage, does it?
I think they could pull in through the front here.
Seems odd to me, I guess.
Any other questions on this item?
Nope.
All right, move on to item number two.
So item number two is this request to...they are requesting you to go industrial. It is currently designated as residential rural desert. This one is within the MSHCP area. And we have been informed by CVAL that if we were to entertain this request, we would most likely not be in compliance with the MSHCP plan.
Any questions? Anyone like to comment on this piece?
Rich Malakoff from the Altam Group, representing Mr. Steve Rosenberg. Rebecca, can you either go to the draft map or blow that up a little bit? So the area we're talking about is at Little Morongo and Dylan Road. And it's actually between two washes. So if you look at the area that we're discussing, even though it's in the habitat area, it's surrounded by industrial. So it doesn't really make sense to be in the habitat area where you're gonna have all that industrial land use all around it. So if you go look to the north, which used to be residential, now it's industrial. On the other side of the wash, it's industrial. And so that's my client's property. And there's already some properties that have been purchased by the Multispecies Habitat. They can stay in that area. But the area between the two washes basically should be industrial so that it's similar to the surrounding area. And then, that's what my client has been requesting. We understand that the habitat area has already been decided, so we just want to put it in our request.
Thank you very much. Yeah, do you have any questions?
I guess my question would be is they've done the biological studies to determine the MSHCP area. Unless we're gonna go back and revisit that and start challenging components that was already settled, correct? So that's what you heard out of CVAL?
That's correct. The plan is set. The maps are set as of right now. And this parcel that he's requesting go industrial is within the MSHCP conservation area. So that's why staff is not recommending to entertain this request.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Your microphone's not on. We'll go back over after each request and just see if there's a consensus on each one.
Okay, all right.
Item number three?
Item number three is a request that changed from a residential single family on the original general plan to this proposed general plan as residential medium, which they would prefer over the previous. However, they wanted to see if they, per the letter you received, designate one parcel as mixed use. They liked the idea of having some commercial frontage. The concern with this request is you wouldn't be able to kind of spot zone one piece. So it would, if you wanted to have this go to commercial, you would have to...or mixed use, I apologize. You would need to basically connect it to the existing mixed use in the corner here. This is mixed use, and you would need to change the whole thing, should you like the idea of putting mixed use along this area.
Can you show us where this is on the larger map so I can get some perspective?
What exactly does mixed use neighborhood mean?
Mixed use allows for commercial and residential. So sometimes, you'll see commercial in the front, residential in the back, or commercial on the bottom floor, residential on the top floor, that kind of thing. It'll be further defined within the zoning ordinance.
So where are we?
Hold on, I'm getting there. Here we go. So their request is right on these two parcels, I believe. So this is the existing corner that we have designated as mixed use to allow for an interesting development and create kind of corner pockets of corner commercial that are tailored to the neighborhoods. But it would also allow some residential in the rear of the properties. And so that was meant to then go to higher density and phase into the lower density. So that's how we originally planned it. But again, the request is to change these to mixed use as well.
Wasn't the SCAG compass blueprint in that area, Scott? Do you remember? Right there where the purplish color is? And then, that's high-density residential there? 20...
Medium.
Residential's medium here.
20 units per acre. Certainly, it'd be high-density, to me.
Any more questions?
Can you go back out a little bit further? That's good. So there's Karen. That's that long stretch there, huh?
Anyone like to speak on this item?
Rebecca, if they want residential medium, but it doesn't require them to build a higher density...if they chose to build a lower density there, they could as well, right?
That's correct. That's why we made sure it was up to 20 units per acre, so it allowed for a variety of housing types.
And their request is to leave it as that and add commercial to...so make it mixed use?
Yeah. Their letter says put one parcel as residential medium and the other as mixed use. That doesn't really work that way. My suggestion, if you liked the mixed use idea...
We'd have to zone all...we'd have to zone the other three.
Either the all four pieces, yes, because they own these two. Or you could look at the entire strip if it made more sense to do mixed use all the way on the street instead of residential medium.
And with mixed use, they could still do residential medium if they wanted to.
They could, I believe. How high is the mixed use set for intensity? I'm sorry, I'm asking a question of our consultant, Jose with MIG. He'll have the information on the density, please.
The neighborhood mixed use goes up to 15 dwelling units per acre.
So the medium would allow for a higher density than the mixed use.
Thank you.
All right, any more questions on this?
I didn't see it. I had it below. I was covered up with the other papers. I apologize.
Anyone like to speak on request number three? All right, move on to request number four.
Okay, so request number four is a request to go to visitor survey. This is one that staff just made a judgment call on where the line should be. I can bring this up in the map as well. So that one is for this piece down here. So it's adjacent to existing visitor serving. I believe it is within the hot water area.
So this is on Mountain View, right after you get above the hill there. So when you're coming back into town. Any questions on this? Any comments from the public on this? Move on to request five.
Request five, six, and seven are all on the south side of Dylan They're in this strip. So one of them is here. So this request, that is this corner of the boundary, is this corner from an exterior perspective. So one is for this parcel. Five is for this parcel. I apologize. Six is for the very corner. And seven is further in from the city boundary there.
So five, six, and seven are all there.
These were changed...my understanding is these were changed to commercial on the south side of Dylan, per request through the interviews and workshops to have the south side of Dylan as commercial, to follow through with previous approvals that said you guys wanted Dylan to be commercial. So that's why this was proposed as such.
With the green lines, is those the subject properties?
Yes. The green lines are the specific properties...
And what do they want?
Of the request. They want industrial.
And this is request five and six?
And seven.
Is there a designation for a mixed use industrial commercial? There is not, right?
We do not have currently proposed a mixed use commercial industrial designation.
So it's currently industrial, but they're requesting to stay industrial?
It's currently proposed as commercial. They're requesting it to go industrial.
Any questions on that? Public comments on these items, these three parcels? Move on to item number eight.
Eight is a request that came through a discussion with Seavag and our consultant. There was some concern regarding keeping the areas within the MSHCP area as single-family residential, as the restrictions within the MSHCP area would not really allow for that kind of density with all of the requirements and preservation that needs to be done. So, they're requesting that all of the designations that are single-family be changed to rural residential desert within the MSHCP area.
On the map with all of the requests on it, it's not showing. There's, seems to be missing. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine.
It's a light green, right?
Oh, okay. I apologize. So, here's the bigger map of the entire MSHCP area. So, they're requesting all of these yellow designations to become rural residential desert and be light green.
As opposed to?
As opposed to single-family residential.
Isn't this the properties that they're buying up?
They're not necess, I don't know which properties they are under negotiation with or in discussions with. All I know is they said basically in realistic reasons, when they go through the development process and the JPR, the joint project review, and meet all the requirements of the MSHCP, they would only be able to develop it closer to one unit per five acres than at the density that a single-family, or residential low, six units per acre would allow. So, they suggested that we present an alternative to you guys to make all of the residential designations as the rural desert instead of the residential single, low designation.
Can you point out one section that you're talking about? This yellow up here by Indian Canyon?
It's all of the yellow in this map that I'm showing in front of you, because this map only highlights the MSHCP properties.
I'm assuming those are the ones they have not purchased yet, and that's why they're requesting...
So, that yellow is in the MSHCP area?
Correct. These are all within the MSHCP area, but do not show currently as preserved open space yet. They have not acquired it.
I'm assuming that's the reason they're asking, because they're planning to acquire it in the future, but they haven't acquired it yet, so it's easier to get it designated now.
And what's, so, this big block up here in the top left, that one, what's next to it? That gray area, is that Mission Lakes?
Well, the gray area is just showing outside the MSHCP area.
Yeah, I know, I'm just trying to get my bearing of where this is.
So, that is this area right here.
Okay, all that yellow area there, right?
So, west of Indian.
You keep zooming in when you didn't need to.
Sorry. I was trying to get the streets to come up. If you're zoomed out too far, you can't see the streets.
I can see the area, though. Okay, so, just that, and all this, there's lots more yellow on this map than just that area you're pointing to.
Correct. That's why I was trying to show on the other map, which only shows you the MSHCP area. So, it'd be this piece, this piece, this piece, and this piece.
Okay, so, that one, that was the only ones we're talking about to change to essentially be green, right?
Correct. So, I provided you in your packet, you should have a bigger page for request eight that shows what they're, basically what their request is. So, if you go with request eight, it would show as pictured from your request eight in your packet.
Any other questions from the council on this item? Any questions from the public on this? I see none. We'll move on to item, request number nine.
Request nine is a request that I kinda found through different staff comments that I wasn't aware of when I first presented this to you previously. This area here is currently as proposed to be low residential. However, we found that there's different properties within it that are visitor-serving uses, or that could be rehabbed as visitor-serving uses, like the Adobe Inn. And there's other larger pieces within this area. And because the visitor-serving commercial residential will allow for both types of uses, staff is presenting an alternative to council to just expand the visitor-serving area. So, it won't outzone the residential, because the residential will still be permitted, but allows for more visitor-serving opportunity within the larger pieces of this area.
Any questions on this?
I've got a question.
Yes?
So, if I have, pick any lot, a single lot surrounded by houses, typical infill lot, houses all the way around it, but now all of a sudden I'm zoned visitor-serving, am I gonna be able to build a residential house without going through major gyrations?
Yes. Our plan in the zoning ordinance is to create a zoning code that allows for residential by right on a certain-sized lot with a certain percentage of residential surrounding it. So, they will not have to go through a zone change or a general plan amendment for those infill, surrounded on three sides, small lots.
Okay, so, conversely, if I owned a large parcel that could meet all the planning requirements for either a boutique spa hotel or some other visitor-serving business, and I wanted to develop that for residential, would I be allowed to?
It may be permitted, we're looking at possibly bringing it back to, to be permitted under a conditional use permit. So, we're working out those details on how that would work. We may want to allow some higher density within some of these areas near the spas, so we're working on it, and it'll come back to you in the zoning code that you will approve.
The intent of the visitor serving was to preserve this resource of the hot water that has one great use, and that's spa hotels. So, if you were gonna take a very large, you know, fifty-acre parcel and say, well, you can now turn that into fifty-acre housing development, I'm not comfortable with allowing residential there. I don't like the idea that that would be a possibility when we're doing this general plan map. I would like to be that hammered down.
I'll take note, that's not part of this general plan map. That'll come back to you with the zoning ordinance. So, I'll take note so that we make sure we incorporate that into the proposed zoning ordinance.
And at the same time, I don't want these people who've been stuck with these parcels that can't develop, we gotta get that resolved, too.
We will try and walk that fine line and present it to you as such.
Thank you. Ms. Waller, anything?
Not on this one.
Okay.
Good, good, good.
Alright, anybody would like to speak on request nine? Do you want this request or just generally? No, your property, JoJo, is not talked about yet, but when we get to the next comments, that's when you wanna make your comments. That's outside of your zone, I believe. Alright, so, with all the requests taken, does anybody have any more specific questions on those requests? So, think about this when we get ready to make a general approval or not on how you want to move forth to those requests. Now, I'd like this opportunity for the public to speak on any items that weren't on the request that they would like to speak on. And JoJo, you're up. Can you introduce yourself and then outline where you're speaking at or just generally?
JoJo Alvarez, I'm at Akoma, west of West Drive. And I'm on the north side of Akoma. And it's the third lot west of West Drive, double parcel. Can you identify that?
Do you have an address?
Six-five-nine-forty. Do you need the parcel number?
If you have the parcel number, that's even easier.
I got it.
So, it's currently proposed in the general plan designation as a mixed use. It would allow for either commercial or residential or a mix.
Could I answer your question?
Yep, I just wanna make sure it's still commercial. There's been a business there existing, but I wanna make sure it still could be another business or whatever.
Not that I'm gonna give you a cheap plug, but it's Alvarez Glass.
Yeah.
Been there for a long time. Okay, so, question answered. Next public comment? Don't fight over the mic, either one of you. I give you both three minutes.
Hi there, my name is Juan Alvarez, and my address is six-five-nine-nine-five Thornton Road. It's a two-story house and by the freeway.
If you wanna bring up the map and just show the I-ten just west of Palm Drive?
T-H-O-R-N, T-O-N.
Right there.
Have that proposed as commercial?
Yes. The story behind this property, obviously, is a kinda weird one. I bought this property with the intention of having my equipment there. I have a construction company for thirty years. When I bought this property, obviously, this property was light industrial. I invested over a hundred thousand dollars on plants, engineering, and a lot of work. The city employees, you know, including Doria, she's not here right now, says, continue with your project, you know, eventually, you're gonna do whatever you have to do, because we were focused on the cannabis industry. Now that you guys have changed it, I lost a hundred thousand dollars. Now, I'm a businessperson, so eventually, I'll do a hotel or I'll do something. I've been approached from Land Desert Ventures to purchase my property also, so I'm good. But, I don't like the idea that you guys keep on changing, or in this case, you know, it costs a lot of money to have a hundred thousand dollars. I have to work a lot to have a hundred thousand dollars. The new industrial park meets commercial-industrial. It is seven buildings. It meets fire, it meets everything, not intended for cannabis, or could be used for cannabis. Planning department has told me that eventually, I can apply for a CUP, you know, maybe get it. In the last three years, I purchased about twenty-six properties here in your city, blighted properties that we fixed up and rented and put back on the market. We just sold our last two ones, as I mentioned before, to the mayor and to Chuck and to other people. My company does not plan to buy any more properties in this city, because in reality, we don't know what's happening. I do understand that coming into the desert, or into Desert Hot Springs from Palm Drive, you know, I miss the cocos, because there's no cocos, you know, I went in to have breakfast. Holiday Inn Express, all of these little places that you can put at the entrance of Palm. But, I'm up the street about a quarter of a mile next to a property that just by months prior to me was approved for a CUP. Like I said, you know, I'll ride the wave, you know, whatever you guys do. I'm a businessperson, you know, I wish you the best.
Juan, before you leave, I have a question for you. Now, this is proposed, what is the current, what is the current zoning for that area?
Commercial.
Okay, are you asking that your triangle there?
It doesn't matter. I have, I can put either...
Well, it does matter to us, because we wanna know what you want. That's why we're here today.
Well, I would like...
Do you wanna keep it commercial? Do you wanna be industrial?
I would like it light industrial.
So, you're asking for us at this point, which is this is your opportunity, because this is a preliminary map?
Correct.
That that triangle be kept industrial?
Correct, I would.
Okay, that makes sense.
Can I ask a clarification on just for finding where this is? Can you put the cursor over his parcel? Okay, and this is proposed to be commercial, and my understanding is nothing's been changed yet. And so, he's here now making requests that you wanna keep it industrial, you don't want it to be commercial.
Well, that's how we started, you know, three years ago. I know things have been changing.
Nothing's changed.
Nothing's changed yet.
There's absolutely zero that's changed.
If you guys have to change it, I'll go with the flow. For me, it doesn't matter, you know?
We don't have to do anything, we're here to serve you.
I have a question. By any chance, does this lie in the area that we had said, like, we wanted to preserve some of the frontage on I-ten specifically for commercial? Is this part of that?
That's my understanding, that this area in this corner that could go commercial was requested to be commercial.
How many acres is all that?
So, we requested that in a prior meeting, correct?
Yours, seven acres?
Seven point three, yes.
How many is the rest of those acre parcel?
The other one is eighty-five acres.
So, that's way bigger than Kmart, right?
Oh, yeah, Kmart is about ten acres.
Yes, this is huge. This would be in all kinds of...
So, if we rezoned it back to industrial, that small triangle, we would still have a hundred, almost two hundred acres of commercial?
It actually makes a cleaner border for the industrial, doesn't it?
Sure does.
But, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Rebecca, does this fall within or without of the green zone?
It is on the boundary. So, with your motion, you could recommend to include this parcel within the cultivation overlay, as well as change it to industrial, or just to change it industrial and leave it outside the cultivation overlay. That would be your options.
Okay, thank you.
So, you got a triangular piece of property?
Correct, correct. Well, one of the things that we're doing right now, and we're waiting for the final decision, is that we have two signs west of us, east of us from Clear Channel. And Desert Land Ventures and myself are trying to see if we can get a total of four signs out there, you know, digital signs after those two. So, there will be a total of six, you know, so it will be all...
Let's not get too far here. Let's try, let's help you with the zoning first.
Well, we need to know where we're going so we can, you know, kinda...
Industrial would be the best choice for you on that piece of property, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna move on to more public comments?
Thank you.
Susan, I think you're up next.
Hello, I'm Susan Miller, a Realtor in Desert Hot Springs. I am a bit flummoxed on the general plan versus the specific questions for zoning. We had a conversation that we were going to do specific zoning after the whole general plan, but I am already seeing some conflicts between some commercial and some overlays of the general plan being blue and some specific being red. I'm already involved with a property that unfortunately, in the county, that the people have been really, really harmed, because they cannot figure out what they can do, because their general plan is different than their specific plan. So, they had to move to Arizona. They had to leave the property in order to just sell it for something. Nope, it can't be sold until somebody straightens out the general plan with the specific plan. And just looking at those maps, I saw some conflicts already prior to. Now, if we wanna do the general plan first, you know, okay, but that's a broad brush. But then, we're talking about specific properties here. And specific, broad brush, big, small, spot zoning, special zoning, conflicts, more spot zoning. I just wanna say these words, because I see them as being an issue in the future if the zoning is not, the usage is not figured out with the bigger picture of the general plan map. Because if you guys all agree with the general plan map and everybody goes, yeah, that sounds, that looks pretty good, but the specifications even on Dillon of being commercial, or commercial halfway back, or commercial, even though we know that some places on Dillon are already industrial pursuant to a change of zoning with the council. So, I'm just saying I'm confused with looking at this, and I think it's valid to look at both things concurrently versus just making decisions initially on the general plan. That's it.
Thanks.
I have a question, if I could.
Sure.
So, the subject raised there, this is my, we're looking at this as far as putting a general plan map together. And at some point in time, somebody has some specific request to offer input to us to say, hey, you know, if you change it this way, it's gonna have an impact on me if you change it another way. And then, we take a look at this and we say, you know, alright, since we're in the process of doing a general plan, alright, we could move that border to clean it up and to make it be a better general plan. It's not that we're entertaining specific zoning requests, we're, this is all in the context of the input of the general plan. So, if anybody has some particular property that they wanna offer that same input, am I off-base here, is that, that's the way I'm looking at this? I don't see anybody's doing, we're not doing specific zoning here or spot zoning. We're looking at this plan and seeing if it fits into what we wanna do. And if somebody's got a request that says, you know, that's not gonna impact how we want, how this layout's gonna look, then, so anyhow, I'm belaboring the point. Okay, thank you.
I think you got, I mean, if you read the top of the map here, it's preliminary. So this is where we're moving towards a.
So if somebody has a specific request, like has happened here, and it's not going to impact me, we could say yes, we could say no, depending on our feelings on how this map should go.
Absolutely. Any other public comments at this time? All right, we'll close public comments on the study item here. We'll go back to council comments. I think we'll take these individually really quick again. Is there any problem with the request number one, having that changed to industrial? It is out of the green zone, so it cannot be cannabis, but it is being asked to be changed to industrial.
I think the, this, we've been thinking about a lot, a lot about this specific request, I think, since December. I think I, I'm just not quite confident, honestly, in the, in the person that's making this request. I feel like when it was made, you know, we were kind of excited about having this RV thing and, you know, potentially generating revenue for the city. But it just kind of started to seem like over time, what they really wanted was that change to industrial, which is why we were, we ended up, you know, delaying this, this item specifically because we were concerned that this was just going to end up have, like, being 78 acres of cannabis within, you know, the city, not on the outskirts of the city. And I, I think, you know, with the overlay, I, I'm glad that that means it's excluded from cannabis businesses. But at the same time, I think, the more I think about it, I, I see more value in it staying commercial in the sense that I think over time, you know, even if it's not a cannabis, you know, project, I, I just feel like if it's going to be an industrial-type project, I would prefer it not being around Dillon and Palm. That's just my personal opinion. I, I don't know, it could become a massive delivery, you know, system, or I don't, I don't know what, shipping pens, or I don't know. But I just feel like that's, that's such a sensitive part of the city. I mean, it's a major entrance to the city, both on Dillon from the freeway and then on Palm. So I, I am not, I do not support changing this to industrial. I, I would feel better having those acres dedicated to commercial, but that's just my personal opinion.
Mr. Gardner?
If I can add, one option is right now it is called a cultivation overlay, but we can also change it to cannabis overlay. It could, we could prohibit any type of cannabis, you know, use, so it would be more of a standard business park or something like that. I just wanted to throw that option out there.
Thank you.
I'm going to agree with my colleague, Ms. Zavala. I, I, I had concerns with this when I was on the planning commission for the same reasons. And it's so close to a residential area, I don't see any, I, I, I would assume that those folks there would not want industrial buildings there. I like leaving it commercial. So if you're taking a headcount on individual notes, I would be a no on option one.
I have two, so what I'm going to do is take that request separately. I'll go out to item number two. Does anybody have a problem with the request of the individual changing it to industrial?
I, I would agree on the same one on that same grounds as.
Keeping it as proposed.
Item two is the one that's part of the species conservation area, right? So it's not like we can really change it without getting backlash.
Exactly. We don't, we'd be taking away MSHCP designation, which we can't do.
So I, I agree with you, no on that one as well.
Okay, we'll take that one separately. Item number three. I think there was a consensus to move this to mixed-use neighborhood, but how far would you want to? If, if I were to ask all of you, did you want to just take that whole strip that's, that's orange?
I'd say the whole strip, yeah. Take that whole strip.
Yep.
You can come with that. It looks like you've got a consensus on that, so we'll be taking that part of the general approval process.
So as I understand it, you would take all of the orange between the two boundaries of the mixed use and change them all to mixed use?
Correct.
I count five lots there.
Just the five up to this boundary or the whole?
Want to go all the way down towards Karen Avenue?
To Karen, yeah.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
All right, sounds like you have consensus on that one. Item number four, does anybody have a problem with changing that to?
I don't have a problem with it. I, I just do need to know that that's the one property that I have a campaign contributor on who, who exceeded the $500 recusal threshold.
Okay.
I, I'm, I support changing it.
And I support changing it, but I.
Does anybody have a problem with changing it? So it's going to be an overall change, so you wouldn't have to recuse yourself. Item number five, six and seven, sounds like they, they're requesting that you spot zone within there. Or could we, Rebecca, is there a way to come up with a mixed-use commercial designation?
Well, they want to go to industrial.
Yeah, but the problem is they want to take three small properties within there, which would not be contiguous to the other areas. So the only other way to do it would be to, to make a new designation that we've mixed-use commercial, which would include industrial and commercial, or we keep it the same. Is there?
There would be nothing that prohibits us from creating a new designation. It would just add to the number of designations as mixed-use industrial commercial. I have, I have mixed feelings. There's, there's good and bad things with it. It does leave you guys flexible. We can be more specific within the zoning map and designate a specific amount in the zoning map, and so if someone wanted to change where their line was between commercial-industrial, it would only require a zone change versus a general plan adjustment. The other thing is, is, you know, if there's, if there's, if you just want to see more commercial, it, it would be a question of how you would mix those together, commercial next to industrial, how you'd want to see that, so that we can make sure that the policies were in line with what you were looking for along this area.
I kind of liked it when we did that one project there that where we, we said the first, what was it, 200 feet was going to be commercial and the rest of it could be industrial.
That's what we're doing here.
Uh, no, we're not.
We're doing the whole lot.
Yeah, we're changing the whole lot.
No, saying what's on the map here is what we talked about, where the first 200.
So you can.
Is that 200 feet?
So this, this pop-out is the one that was previously approved? And so if you wanted to line it up, all of the requests would still be commercial. But if you want to move the industrial line to this line, that would be an alternate possibility.
You split a property like that? If that's an individual lot, can you, the first 200 feet can do this and the last 200 feet can do that?
You can.
Okay.
It, it makes it harder to implement, but it's possible.
I, I have a, I have a question. So are we only talking about that blue square right there?
So this blue pop-up square is changed on this map because that's what you guys previously approved for this project, for the commercial frontage and the back. So if you wanted to line up.
That's the one that came to the council a long time ago, the one that I voted no.
So, so we wanted to make sure that they kept their industrial that was previously approved up to their limit line. So if you wanted to move the line.
And the three properties that we're talking about right now, where, where are they relative to that blue square?
Sorry, I've, so you've got three in here. Another one right, right here.
Okay, and where's eight?
Last one is.
So one, two.
And the last one is this piece. So this one would be the only one that would get a partial designation. The others, if you lined it up with this, all of them would stay commercial for the first two, and the second one would be able to have industrial in this back path.
Yeah, but, but the requests right now, the first two, for example, those are like right up on front of, those are like right on Dillon.
Request seven is the only one that goes as deep as the full commercial.
Which means that essentially for the first two, we would be having like cultivation on Dillon because they're looking to change it to industrial for cultivation purposes.
If you took the request and basically changed this whole thing to industrial, then it would allow for that on Dillon, correct?
Yeah, see, and I, I have an issue with that, you know, it's, it's Dillon, and we have people living there by the Valero gas station. We, whereas, I know that Angel View is, is there as well. People go shop there. I, I mean, I just.
You've got Dillon's and you've got the traders of the Lost Ark are there as well. And in talking to both of those owners, they want to leave the entire strip as commercial, the entire frontage.
Yeah, which makes sense, and plus I think in conversations in the past, the council has talked about wanting to revitalize Palm and Dillon to be more commercial. In fact, I recall even having some conversations on some of the industrial or some of the residential areas, like having mixed use so that we can encourage more commercial. I, I just, I understand where people are coming from with these requests. I totally get it. But I just cannot support changing that to industrial on Dillon.
Five, six and seven, we'll take individually. Eight is the multi-species request that the properties be kept in rural, rural desert. Does anybody have any problem with that? I see none. We'll move on to item number nine, which is the inner-city request for an overlay of visitors serving. Does anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay, so item one, I'd like to take a motion on that separately. This is a request. Can we bring that request up on the screen so I can at least read it?
Do we?
The staff report, the staff report, sorry.
The presentation?
Yes, thank you. So request number one is my desert's garage, 657-230-009 through 010, 017, 020 and 022. Those are the APN numbers, and this request is on the map there to be taken from commercial to industrial. I'll accept a motion on that to accept or deny.
A motion to deny and to keep it as commercial.
I'll second that.
There is a motion on the table to deny the request?
Hey, better go quick, you're going to be thinking at the end there.
Is there any other comments on this item by the council? Please vote.
Motion passes with Mayor Mattis opposed.
All right, our next request is item number two.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt? Can we put an alternate discussion? In, in researching this today, this lot is 2,000 feet deep, which makes the back really hard to use for commercial. On our original proposal at the workshop, it included residential medium in the back, and I wanted to see how council would feel about adjusting the commercial beyond keeping the commercial frontage in line with the corner, but put residential medium in the back to allow higher density in the back.
My view is we just voted, and I understand something's coming along, but I thought if the council.
That's, that's fine.
This is also a preliminary map. If you think, if somebody feels very strongly about this, you could bring another request before the final map.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two is a request by the developer or the landowner to change it to industrial. I'll accept a motion to approve or deny.
Motion to deny. This was the MSHCP one, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll second.
I'm sorry, can you repeat the motion? I did not hear that.
The motion was to deny the request to change zoning, the proposed zoning to industrial. Please vote.
Motion passes with Mayor Mattis opposed.
All right, moving on to, let's see, three, we're all in, you've got consensus. Four, everybody's got consensus. Five, six and seven, they're basically, I'm sorry, six and five was to go to commercial or industrial. Can I see a staff report on those?
Go to industrial. From commercial to industrial.
And these are the ones that are along Dillon.
Yeah.
Can you put the request on the screen, the PowerPoint? So five is the block that you see there, and that's requested to change from commercial, propose commercial to leave it industrial or change it to industrial. Item number six is the same request, and item number seven is the same request. If you can change the screen there, you've seen all the boxes there. We can take them individually or as one motion?
Motion on five, six and seven to keep.
I'm sorry, I can't hear. Can you speak into the mic, please?
Your microphone.
Motion to keep all, to consider them all together, five, six and seven, and have them all be designated as commercial.
Second. Did you want to do all of them at once or?
Mm-hmm, it's up to you guys.
It's a bit of an opposite motion than what we've had in the past, which was to deny the request.
This is to.
It's the same, it's basically, it's worded different. It is to deny the request.
Yeah.
So if you can put it on the screen, Joe.
Well, that's because I made it instead of Manny Yelling.
You're a positive guy. You like positive.
Mr. Betts, you push a button, second. Any other comments from the council? Please vote.
Motion passes with Mayor Mattis opposed.
All right, we're taking all the requests. Now we'll take a general approval. I do need to make a couple of comments on the general map itself.
Before you do that, real quick, do we want to address what I would call is item number 10?
That's what I'm doing right now.
Okay, all right.
I'm, I would like to see two requests in the approval process of the preliminary map. One at the corner of Little Morongo and Dillon Road is proposed. If you can bring up the, sorry, guys, I know I keep going back and forth. If you can bring up that corner of Little Morongo and Dillon Road. That, right there at the northeast corner is proposed commercial. It's already in development as industrial and it's already been approved for cultivation. I'd like that to go back to industrial.
Yeah.
And then also the requests.
Can I get clarification? That's all the way to the street?
Yes.
Correct.
For both pieces?
Correct. The both pieces, one's under construction and one's already has approval for cannabis.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then at the, one, your request was at the corner there, the triangle, to make it contiguous with Desert Lands Adventures property and to outline it within the green zone.
Clean up the boundary.
Clean up the boundaries, yeah, including the triangle.
And extend the green zone around it?
Sure. It's only going to be a couple acres, not going to change any, change any of our perspective.
What's that little?
Yep.
Cutout there that's not red?
Ain't that somebody else's property, isn't it?
That's. That piece right there?
Yeah.
Usually when that's the case, it's Caltrans or other right-of-way.
Come on.
The database doesn't have an assessed parcel for that particular property. So it's either, either Caltrans right-of-way, we'd have to do some research, but there's no assessed parcel data set with that property.
Thank you. Those are my proposals. Who's next?
I'll second that motion if you're good with that.
I just approved the map in, in general with those, with those two, we, I just wanted to make sure there was no other proposals.
I've got another one.
Where?
Over here on the west side.
Turn on your mic.
Yeah, thanks. Just keep reminding me there. On the west side of 62, that showing is 20 per acre. That seems to be a pretty sensitive area for that kind of intensive development. Maybe over on the east side of 62, around that commercial area, I can see it. But I, I just doesn't stick out like a sore thumb.
Is there any reason why it's designated as that?
I believe it's in line with some of the specific plans densities approved around it. It allowed for a combination of both lower and higher to get kind of a standalone project out there.
Is this a Mission Creek Preserve?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. It's the Mission Creek project.
No, Mission Creek's further up.
Is it? Okay.
No, it's not.
But is it by?
But it's contiguous with the Mission Creek project.
I think that, I think that plan, if there's anything there, is in bankruptcy with SunCal, and nobody's come forward with anything on that. And so we're not upsetting any plans that are out there, even though it's been approved or may have been, may not have been approved. And I think it missed its deadline for reapproval. They never made application to reapprove that. Am I correct in that?
I, I'm not aware of the approval status. I do know that some property owners that do own it, not, not a bank, called and checked what their designation was and was happy with what was proposed. But that's the only information I have.
I think they had an entitlement that was due to be renewed, and they never put in the request to renew it because that was a whole deal with the, the Atkinson, as he went and took care of his section to get it renewed in a timely manner. I don't think this one was ever, I don't think we're bound by anything that happened 10 or 15 years ago on this one in trying to decide what's the best use for this property, is what I'm saying.
Are you aware of any, any reasons we would be bound to this? Anyone? All right, so the proposal is from you, Mr. Betts?
To just put it to.
The next, the next designation is residential low would be up to six.
Yeah, residential low on that side.
So you're talking about the whole orange section that she's pointing to right now?
On the west side of 62, and I'm comfortable with on the east side of 62, that section orange, I'm fine with that.
Does anybody have the problem with that request?
Can you show me where the, where's the?
It's just the orange here. Put the cursor to the left, there, and down there.
And you want to make that back to lower residential as opposed to medium residential? Where do we, where, where is the Mission Creek project? And it's the next parcel over?
No.
Is this it? No?
No, that one, yes. Nope, you were just on it.
So.
Go north.
North.
Right there.
And it's, it's subject to its specific plan, correct? And it's specific. And its specific plan allows for what density? Do you know? Anybody know?
It's mixed.
It's mixed.
It's mixed. Wouldn't it make sense to, since it does above that, to leave this as a higher-density one so that it blends in with that, or?
It depends on your view of what's compatible with sand, snow, and these other issues that are centered around this other issue that we have going.
Yeah.
So, my preference is that it just, it's, right now, as it is, if you're just looking at a map, you're just putting an intensive development right in the middle of, of everything's surrounded. There's too much of a contrast there. You'd have a nice transition if you had it as, you know, the rural residential there. Then you've got the, everything's...
Well, you have rural residential there, and then you move into the denser proposal.
Well, I'm pushing for rural residential if we end up at...
That's one dwelling per five acres.
Yeah, well, if we end up at the residential low, at six acres, six dwelling units break, we're a whole lot better off than what's planned here. You're driving along, and you're gonna have apartment buildings sticking out of the desert. It just doesn't fit.
We're running out of time, so I don't mean to cut you off, but...
So, I'll throw him with yours.
Does he have, does he have any, anyone that wants to join him on changing that designation? I do not.
I do not.
Do you want to change that?
I mean, if you're, rural is a little too low.
So, I'm going with the residential low. Change it from orange to the yellow.
I'd feel more comfortable with that than rural.
I'd be more comfortable leaving it with the orange.
Can we bring this back before the final map as a separate item, so that some of us can do some studying on it?
Yeah.
Would that be a problem?
Let's bring it back.
The biggest concern is those densities are exactly what we study in the traffic and moving forward in the environmental, so it would delay us moving forward and starting the EIR if we didn't know what kind of densities we would be permitted in there.
Should be changed tonight if we're gonna do it.
Well, can I make a comment real quick? The EIR will have alternatives that look at possibly less intense to minimize environmental impacts. So, as part of the EIR, we could look at that as an RL. That's just thrown as an option, because there, we are looking at several alternatives in the EIR to minimize impacts.
We kept it like this for now, but the EIR could show that it could be less...
We could look at some particulars areas that we could lower the density.
Does that satisfy you, or I can pull it out and take it as a separate item for vote?
And if, my understanding, if we do that, that means when we bring the final map back, we could change it to RL without having to delay the process, because it would have already been considered in the EIR.
So, let's go then, let's go with that. It's okay.
Okay, so leave it as is for right now, and then you'll find out later. All right, any other proposed changes to the map? All right, so then my motion is to accept the map as is with the request of Little Morongo and Dillon Road change, and the change at Thornton and whatever street that is.
And what are we doing with the change that I just requested?
We were gonna leave it for now and then wait for the EIR to come back.
I really want a change. I don't want the vote no. We should take it as a separate.
Does anybody want to second that for our votes to take it separately?
It'd be easier for me, voting-wise, if we handle it separate, because then I'd go yes on the others and...
No problem with that. So, we'll take this as request number 10 to change that, those parcels out there on sixty-two, west of sixty-two, north of Pearson Boulevard, to be changed to rural desert or low desert, or low residential. You, what would you do?
Go with residential low.
Residential low. Does he have a second?
I'll die for voting.
Please vote.
Motion failed with Mayor Mattis.
Can't go back to my motion. Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. Sorry, I'm talking over you there. Going back to my main motion, which is to accept the map as is with the proposed request changes and denials, and then the two changes to the corner of Little Morongo, Dillon Road, and Thornton.
And can I clarify, request eight and nine is included with those changes?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I got one comment before we...
Yeah, absolutely.
But I'm not in the queue right now.
Mr. Betts, or Ms. Avall first?
Oh, I'm not in the queue, sorry.
Okay, so then the question comes up of, and I've had this conversation with staff today, but somewhere, point in time, the arterial streets has to come up for discussion and decision of this council, which streets are gonna be designated as, and we're dealing with that at a later date?
That's correct.
That's not finalized in this.
That's correct. Now that we have, after you make the motion, we'll be able to run the traffic and the numbers based on the densities proposed and put together that, and I'd be happy to bring it back for a study session.
That's an important conversation. It opens up to all kinds of regional funding for our main arterial roads, once we designate them. That way, for example, we want Little Morongo to go all the way down and get an overpass someday on the ten.
All right, Mr. Gardner?
I just wanted to commend and thank staff for the great job on this. I know it's been a long, arduous process. It started when I was on the Planning Commission. You've made this a very simple, very easy-to-understand map, and I just say, want to say good job for that.
If nobody else in the queue, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Our, we're gonna recess to a closed session. Before we recess to closed session, I don't think we're gonna get through all three items, but we're gonna try to get through at least one. I'll have the city attorney announce them.
Thank you. We have three items for closed session. First one is conference with legal counsel per existing litigation. Paragraph one is subdivision D of Government Code 54956.9, Garcia versus City of Desert Hot Springs, Riverside Superior Court, case number PSC 1807458. Second one is also conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, which is, again, section 54956.9D1 in the matter of the administration of DHS drugs, case number PRIN 1801126. The next one is conference with legal counsel regarding a potential initiation of litigation regard, paragraph, excuse me, section 54956.9D4, and there's one matter.
If there's anybody in the public that'd like to comment on closed session, this is the time to do so. I see no one coming forth. We'll recess to closed session. Closed session went a little bit long, but we're gonna start with item number six, which is Helping Hands, Open Hearts Presentation. This is by Lucas Steed, Boy Scout Troop 262. He's gonna make his way up here. What I understand is that he is working on his Eagle Scout. He's gonna explain a little more of exactly what he's doing, but part of his Eagle Scout is a presentation, and he'll explain what he's going to be doing in the community. This young man came to my office a couple of weeks ago, and I am thrilled to see him moving forth with what he's doing. So, with that, Lucas, is there a green dot on that microphone there?
Yes.
And you're all set, and the floor is yours. If you can keep it under three hours, we'd be happy. Go for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials, and community members. My name is Lucas Steed. I am thirteen years old, thirteen years old, and in the eighth grade at Desert Springs Middle School. I'm a life scout with Scouts BSA Troop 262. I am here tonight to present my Eagle project, my Eagle Scout leadership project called Helping Hands Open Hearts. I am hoping to assemble 100 hygiene and snack packs for the homeless in Desert Hot Springs. I chose this project because for the last two years, I have volunteered with God's Kitchen when I am able to, and I have seen how some just struggle to find the basics. I know the packs aren't going to be a solution, but they are my way of helping. If I can bring a smile to even one person's face, all the work will be worth it. I'm here asking members of the community for help for my project. I have flyers of listed requirements that I need, and my contact information. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Are there any questions I can answer?
I will start with city council members. Anyone down here? I have a couple fighting over the mics here. Yes, Ms....
What exactly is in the packs?
Uh, what is in, well, we have different kinds of packs. We have one for a men's pack and one for a female pack. What's in the female pack is soap, tissues, shampoo, first-aid kits, and toothbrush, toothpaste, Q-tips, and a flashlight, feminine products, and socks.
That's enough, that's enough. You got enough in there.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you said you have a list. Do you have a list for us?
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'm done.
And how do you plan to distribute each of the packs?
Uh, God's Kitchen goes out every Sunday and passes out little paper bags of sandwiches, so I plan to go out with them and pass out the projects.
Thank you. Ms. Avall?
And then, where can we drop off the packets?
Uh, on my flyers, they have a contact information, and if you would, to email me or call the number on the list, we could come and pick them up.
Perfect. And then, just so that the public can hear, what would be that contact phone number or email?
The phone number would... So, the contact number would...
I got it right here if you need it.
Yeah.
It's 760-668-4127. That's 760-668-4127, or you can email helpinghandsopenhearts@outlook.com, and I'll make sure I get this on my Facebook for you.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. You did so great, and I'm so happy you're doing that.
What's on the other side of the board?
Oh.
That's for the public, not us.
Well, it's also for you, too.
All right.
So, this is my presentation board that I've been presenting to companies, stores, and also any other scouts that would are willing to help.
Explain one other thing, your Eagle Scout, how does a packet work to become an Eagle Scout?
So, the way to become an Eagle Scout is you have to work up through the ranks, and you have to wait a certain amount of time, six months? Six months? Six months before you can actually have your Eagle Corps. But you have to plan a project, get it approved, and then you have to work on that project, have it completed, and there is paperwork that you need to fill out for before, during, and after, and then you can have your Eagle Corps.
Wonderful. Well, good luck with everything.
Quick question. So, you're 13?
Yes.
You are very well-spoken. Very, very good to have you a part of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Betts.
Anything else? Lucas, thank you. Good luck with everything. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if we can get Lucas to stop for a second and talk to Doria, we'll get his photograph, and then we'll get his information up on our website, so he can collect his other packs.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
All right, good luck with everything. We'll see you back here when you're an Eagle Scout, right? All right, our next presentation tonight is going to be from One Future Coachella Valley Presentation, and I think we have Sheila Thornton.
Good evening, and Lucas just taught me that I should expand my welcome. So, Mayor Mattis, city council members, staff, and community members. Thank you, Lucas. Is that his first name? Is that correct?
Yes.
He didn't hear me, but, okay. So, my name is Sheila Thornton, and I am with One Future Coachella Valley, and I think I'm supposed to turn this on. This is always where it gets difficult for me. Let's see if it clicks it. No, there you go. Okay. I am with One Future Coachella Valley. I'm the CEO and President, and with me tonight is our Vice President of Regional Strategy, Kim McNulty, a longtime resident, actually born in the Coachella Valley in Palm Springs, and Ann Kalasek, who's with Palm Springs Unified School District, who is obviously a very dedicated and connected partner on our work over the last 14 years. Our mission, we're here tonight just to talk about where One Future Coachella Valley is. Yeah, I think you all know where we've been. We were under Coachella Valley Economic Partnership until two years ago, spun off as our own independent nonprofit and became an independent 501(c)(3) with the name One Future Coachella Valley. Our mission is to ensure all students succeed in college, career, and life as a driver of economic prosperity for our region. That mission is very similar to what you would see in a county office of education in school districts across the United States. The tie here is that it is not about just one school district doing this work or another, or an individual college, or a nonprofit working on it, but rather, our work is to connect the dots between a whole array of community organizations, districts, and college partners who can really lift the bar in terms of educational attainment for our region. As I said, the, our work really started out of the concept that without an educated population, you will have significant problems with building a strong economy, specifically through quality workforce. When we started the work, our major employers were saying they were going out of the valley 80% of the time to fill the high-wage positions, and that is a problem on many levels. In healthcare, it's a problem if you don't have nurses, physicians, public health professionals, and administrators. It's also a problem if you're recruiting from outside the area and a spouse or partner doesn't have a management job. So, it really does behoove us to build our own quality workforce. So, that's really where this came out of, the work from the very beginning. As I said, we spun off from CVEP in 2017, March 1st, 2017. We started with a board of three, and we now are up to eight members on our board, and you've got them listed there. Our focus now for the last couple of years, this first two years actually, was to spin off, to start a strong foundation, and now to get to a point where we can get this program to sustainability. We've had a significant amount of funding come through outside funders, the James Irvine Foundation, College Futures Foundation, Lumina Nationally, the Ford Motor Company Fund, but have not been able to get to a point where we were sustainable. And we are known as a model in the state and nation, but had not gotten to the point where it was, we were able to co-invest in this for the Coachella Valley. So, that's a significant piece of our work now. The basis for this is all about educational attainment as it relates to employment and income. The stats are consistent across the board. The higher the level of education a person has, the more likely they are to pay their bills, to own a business, to lead in the community, to serve in a workforce, in a healthcare workforce, or in government or other. So, we are aiming our kids, and this is kids valleywide, at a college degree, credential, or certificate in order for them to make more money and contribute their gifts in the future. We often hear the question, not every, or the comment, not every student is going to college, but in a region where only 30% of adults have an AA degree or higher, and only 11% of adult Hispanics have an AA degree or higher, we have nowhere to go but up. So, the point about not needing some post-secondary work is really moot from our perspective. Every child should graduate with college aptitude in order for them to be able to enter the workforce or to enter a pathway to be able to get into leadership, own a business, or have a profession. Top jobs in our region and across the United States require a degree. You've probably read a lot about artificial intelligence and robotics replacing jobs. Where you're gonna see hollowing out is in all those middle-skill jobs. You'll end up with a lot of direct-care jobs, like in home care, CNAs and such, and then you'll need bachelor's degrees, and specifically STEM bachelor's degrees, in order for our kids to be competitive in the future workforce. We also are competing with the metro regions. So, this is just some information from the California Future Health Workforce Commission. I served as a commissioner for the last 18 months on that and developed, helped develop a set of recommendations for our state to address the crisis level that we're at in terms of producing the future workforce, and it is really all about communities across the state being able to grow their own quality healthcare workforce in order to serve those needs for the future. So, our model is really to think backwards from the jobs and to bring together a cross-section of those who can affect a student all along their pipeline into and through college, and those who would employ them now or employ them in the future. In 2012, we adopted what's called the Regional Plan for College and Career Success. It is something that keeps all of our three school districts, our college partners, Riverside County Office of Ed, Riverside County EDA, and hundreds of business partners together on some common themes. So, what you see there are our North Star themes. We want high graduation rates, because that's critical for our student success. It's the first step into and through college. We want to see more career readiness and aligned with real jobs of the future. We want to see increased rates of college readiness, increased college completion... increased college completion and degree completion because many students start, but stop out for a whole variety of reasons. And our lowest-income students are most affected by that. And then ultimately, we want our students in our jobs. Um, until about a month ago, two of 10 of our staff members were, um, our own students that came up through the pipeline. Um, up through about a year and a half ago, I think, uh, the second one was, and that was Anieli Zavala. And so we have a pretty significant structure. We actually adopted something from Nashville that's called Alignment USA. And it's a way that we get at very difficult community problems like poverty, violence, low educational attainment, um, uh, and align resources across the community. We use a process, uh, to do this. Uh, we're, we're just beginning to do this in a new team in the city of Desert Hot Springs, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Um, but this is just how we manage a cross-section of work. We have teams on data, K-12 education, college completion, opportunity, youth, uh, be, uh, business engagement, and scholarships and financial aid. Some of you may know us for our scholarship work. Um, some of you may know us for the career pathways work. But, um, the, the story behind this is that there are many, there's folks working on multiple levels on this regional plan that are moving the big numbers forward. Some of the focus areas in the last regional plan, which was adopted in 2012, um, I'll talk about three of them. One was, all three school districts agreed to get to 30% of students studying in career academies. I call them college and career academies because they prepare students for college and career, which is essential for them to be successful. Um, we set a goal of 85% of, uh, students completing the FAFSA, which is the first step into college. And you would be surprised how many students, uh, were not completing the FAFSA at the time, and how that really did, uh, affect disproportionately low-income areas. So we set this goal as an equity goal to be sure that every child was expected and had that opportunity to be able to get into something post-secondary. Um, and then the last one is a million dollars in scholarship endowed, uh, for the future because we use that as a base to catalyze regional college scholarship giving. So what's happened since we started, um, the school districts did this work. They set the goal of 30% of students studying. When we started in 2005, uh, six career academies existed, or maybe it's five, with about 600 students. Today, there are 47 career academies and pathways across the Coachella Valley, and they are aligned with jobs that, that are, are real jobs and pathways that are true pathways for students, and they are about high academic rigor. Um, yeah, uh, those career academies produce students who are graduating at a greater, uh, rate, and they also are enrolling in college at a higher rate. We've awarded $14.5 million in scholarships. We, we receive a million dollars a year for the last 10 years from the College Futures Foundation, specifically because, because they saw this region as a region that solves its problems and thinks about things from a backwards design perspective, really thinking about educational attainment as economic development. They came into the region and began investing a million dollars a year. We didn't leave that in isolation, but we began matching it with, um, 14 to 18, depending on the year, nonprofit organizations, including the Desert Hot Springs Women's Club, the Boys and Girls Club of the Coachella Valley. And that turned into $14.5 million, um, across, uh, that was awarded to 2,200 students. Uh, 1.4 million of that went to Desert Hot Springs students. And the, our matching, uh, arrangement with these nonprofits is a critical component of the strategy to really accelerate how we think about building a college-going culture. It is not just about putting money in the pocket of a student. Student needs much more than that, support services, they need connection to employers, and that, we need to hold ourselves accountable for them completing if our dollars are going to make a difference. And that's what that was all about. So for the students that received our scholarship, they have 8% more in financial aid capture and 16% less in student loan debt. Those are the kinds of things that we want to see happen for every child that graduates from a high school in the Coachella Valley in the future. And it is all about scaling that as a total community. Uh, the FAFSA completion rate, as you saw, we set the, the goal at 85% across all three school districts, not just one high school or one school district. The school districts went to work at that, counselors, administrators. We held us, all of ourselves accountable for it, and they moved it to 70% last year. We're now talking about in Regional Plan 2.0, how we actually get to that 85% plus, um, goal to be sure that every child has the basic steps into college. And then we've placed 156, uh, local undergrad juniors and seniors in college in full-time paid jobs, their internships in healthcare during the summer. Um, and they are students who have real prospects for being leaders in the future and affecting health professions in the future. Um, students, we have, initial data shows that 78% of the scholars who graduate have a job. Because we put a lot of attention to healthcare and a lot of money went into healthcare, 40% of those with a bachelor's have it in healthcare. Uh, we now want to see that happen in other areas. And, uh, 51% of our students are employed locally. So here's an example of some of the great people. You'll recognize one of the names. Just to pull out a few of those who received part of the 1.4 million or the 600,000 in internships. Anieli, you know her pathway. But she's a really great example of getting a scholarship, then getting an internship in healthcare, moving on to a fellowship through the, the, um, internship program, coming back and serving in multiple places, working on our staff, and then moving on, uh, in her pathway into law. So that is really what we want to see, uh, for every student. Another one is Juan Guzman, who we thought maybe would have been here tonight, but it maybe is not. He is, uh...
But he lives in DHS.
Yeah, he lives in DHS. Um, he's a fantastic student. He was a three-time internship student, I think a couple of times our scholarship recipient. Um, he's worked with the Future Physician Leaders Program, um, is planning on being in medical school, but right now is an entrepreneur, started his own business, uh, in software development related to healthcare. And then Ruby Basaril is, um, a student of ours who was a scholarship recipient for a number of years. Uh, she got a fellowship with the new UCR School of Social Innovation at, um, at UCR. They placed, uh, they, they had 100 applicants for a five-slot, uh, fellowship this last year. It's a brand-new initiative out of UCR to get at social innovation. Of the five students that were selected from the 100, two of them were the scholarship students. So we're very proud of that. They're from the Coachella Valley, and they are the leaders and the changemakers of the future. Um, and Ruby now, uh, she worked with us on the fellowship and is now working at COD as an outreach specialist, and she's going to change the world. She and her family is, uh, still in DHS, um, but she was from DHS. The exciting news, um, we did, have been working this structure for long and seeing serious long-term change across the whole region. And, uh, Palm Springs Unified School District Superintendent Sandy Lyon is on our board. And as I said, Anne Calisak is here tonight, and she's been very instrumental in a lot of the work that we've been doing. And very specifically, we started addressing an issue that is really difficult in the city of, of Desert Hot Springs. And it is about chronic absenteeism and its impact, uh, on student success for the long run. So the school district asked if we could facilitate an alignment team. You saw that structure, but an alignment team around chronic absenteeism. And specifically to see what we couldn't do if we used this process of bringing a cross-section of community members together, set some common goals, made sure that we were incremental about it, uh, set the foundation for how we would align resources, and then monitored progress on it, and then iterated on that. Um, so we are now working with Palm Springs Unified to establish that team. A number of you were there last week, I believe, a week ago Monday at that meeting. Thank you for participating in it. Um, and it really is aimed at addressing the issue of chronic absenteeism as a driver of student success. Um, here is the purpose for the team, but I thought it'd be helpful for Anne Calisak to just come up and talk a little bit about it from the school district's perspective.
Um, so, good evening, hello? Um, yeah, we're very excited to partner with One Futures because, as Sheila said, I have been involved with them for a number of years in a number of projects. And one thing that we're really grappling with is this idea of chronic absenteeism, basically meaning that a student misses 10% of, or more of their enrolled days in a school year. Um, so we have 180 days. If they miss 18 days, they're considered chronically absent. And from a very young age, it means they're at a higher risk of not completing school. Uh, they're, you know, and all other types of things. So we really want to wrap our, our, our project around Desert Hot Springs specifically because you, as you saw, most of our schools out here have approximately a 25% chronic absentee rate. Um, and so the idea was, I, 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 I saw something that Culver City was doing where they were bringing all their community partners together to wrap around families to really address family issues in Culver City. So I called on One Futures. I said, "Okay, this is perfect for the work. Let's get partners together." We probably had 40 people or so at that first meeting, and some people said that they couldn't, uh, attend but want to be involved. So the idea is to get our community partners, set a goal, and really have one or two actions that we're really going to focus on to make, uh, a difference with our students here in Desert Hot Springs. So, uh, like Sheila said, Chief was there, Anieli was there, Jan was there. So we thought it was a good meeting, so hopefully it did, too.
So, we're here tonight to can, bring you up to date, but also to invite you to participate, to be engaged with One Future, to think with us, and to contribute to, um, the future direction. We are now just about to adopt Regional Plan 2.0. We brought together 80 folks from across the region, uh, this last month um, to set forth our next five-year plan. And you can be ready to see some of the same kinds of change happen that we've achieved across the last, uh, 14 years with this collaborative. Um, we have nowhere to go but up, and we have an incredible process and group of people who are on board with this. We are, we are in a place, though, where we have got to find the funding and the resources to align around financial aid and scholarship giving and sustainability for the initiative. Um, we think of this in terms of education as economic development, so we ask you to think about how it ties with your economic development agenda. Um, and also what you might do as a city to think about how you engage your community, potentially your vendors, your, your businesses here, who could support, um, what the momentum that has been established via outside funding. About $27 million of funding has come, most of that from outside this region. Um, they're attempting to replicate this in other areas. I actually am, uh, coaching a group of five cities in the Monterey Bay area who want to create the same kind of work, um, to think about how they can do that, but they're, you know, 14 years behind us. We actually have an infrastructure where this is not just about One Future. It is about a true cross-section of people who are doing something together to change our conditions without any state or federal mandates. We're doing this because it's good for our children and good for our economy. So I invite your participation and your support for our work.
Thank you so much. I'll take questions from the council. Mr. Gardner?
Just, uh, a quick comment and a question for you, too. You remind me a lot of the work that I did in my previous life up in Washington for the College Success Foundation, a very similar organization to yours. I was, quite frankly, alarmed at those, um, absentee, chronic absenteeism rates. I was just curious, if you know, really quick, and if you don't, get back to me. How did we compare here in DHS with other cities in the valley as far as this chronic absenteeism rate?
I can only speak to Palm Springs Unified. Um, so we, as you know, Palm Springs Unified serves Desert Hot Springs, Ranch Mirage, Cathedral City, Palm Springs. Our district, uh, chronic absenteeism is also high, but as a district, it's 18%. So it's much higher than our district average.
Uh, just real quick, I want to say this is really serious, and we're lucky to have it in Desert Hot Springs. And in my opinion, you want people to come here. You want people to come and live here. But this is a way for us to grow people and for us to come, uh, to cut the, um, uh, cost of low cost, low-cost living of poverty. And we're very lucky that you picked Desert Hot Springs. And for others, I want you to know, with respect to absenteeism, this isn't about school districts getting money. This is about growing our youth.
Ms. Zavala?
Well, I, I think as, as you all know, and you heard, I'm a prime example of, you know, having the benefit of having an organization like One Future Coachella Valley in the desert. Um, I was fortunate that I was able to graduate debt-free from UCLA, and that was through the support of this nonprofit that exists to not only fund students from Desert Hot Springs to go to college, but throughout the entire Coachella Valley. And I know that sometimes it is a little difficult to think about education as economic development. It does take time to see that, but it does happen. When, when a child has an opportunity to go to college, their earning potential increases dramatically. That's the, a surefire way to get out of poverty. And I know a lot of our students here in Desert Hot Springs struggle with, with poverty. I think, um, when Jen and I were at the, uh, meeting, I think it was last week, uh, I think there was a statistic out there that it was about 43% of children are living in poverty. I can't recall if that was in Palm Springs Unified overall or if it was specifically in Desert Hot Springs, but I believe it was in Desert Hot Springs. So that's an alarming statistic. And I would be more than happy to, so, to financially support and contribute to the work that you're doing here in, in Desert Hot Springs and overall the Coachella Valley. I think, long-term, I know when we think about economic development in the city, one of those things is raising that median household income in our community to attract more businesses and more people that want to, you know, move and live here so that we can offer more services to constituents. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a long-term investment, but it's one that has a return. And I know that, uh, speaking from experience, you know, when you do receive a scholarship, you have a, a tie to the community because you know that the community believed in you, and they chose you, and they helped support you. So you always feel that, um, sense of debt and, and that feeling of wanting to reciprocate and wanting to give back to your community when they make investments like this in your future. So, thank you for being here. I, I hope the public tuning in today, uh, goes online and, and checks out the nonprofit, and perhaps they'd also be willing to get involved or to contribute in some way. But I feel like as far as the city, I, I'd be more than happy. In the past, we've supported, uh, other entities like Desert X, and I think this is a worthy, uh, cause and nonprofit to support. So, thank you.
Mr. Betts?
I, I think the value of your program was very well spoken right here to the right. So, um, great job. That's what I wanted to say.
Let's close with this. Uh, I know you invited the whole city council to come to the meetings. If in the future we're going to partner and there's going to be decision-making and then becomes a Brown Act, so you might want to pick two that you like the best. Oh, I'm sorry. I know it's going to be her. But you might want to pick two to be representing the city council at these meetings. So if we do partner in the future and there's decisions that need to be made up here, it doesn't become a Brown Act violation. I am in full support of what you're doing here and where we're going. Anne's always been a great partner of our community. I know she continues to do that, so thank you. And Sheila, thank you for coming up and, and explaining this to us and exactly what's going on here. And I had a good meeting with Dr. Lyons last week, and, and she's thrilled and really excited for what you guys are trying to accomplish. So, um, again, you got my full support.
One more thing. I think that helps explain the letter we got at our house about kidnapping. But he had an appendix out, so...
He was under those 18 days, so he's okay. I know you don't let him stay home 18 days. All right, with that said, um, thank you, and we'll be talking more.
Thank you very much.
All right, we're going to recess, uh, for, uh, we'll come back at 6:15 to start the regular session.
Right. So I wrote up these long, long notes.
All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order here. This is the City of Desert Hot Springs Regular Meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the Redevelopment Agency Board for February 5th, 2019. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts?
Present.
Councilmember Gardner?
Present.
Councilmember Zavala?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tempe?
Present.
And Mayor Madas?
Presidents. Um, tonight we have the flags, who will be given by the Boys and Girls Scouts, 160, Troop 1606. If anybody would like to give an invocation tonight. I don't see anybody in the audience stepping forth. Anybody from the council? All right. Would you like to do it from here?
No, I thought you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I didn't know, right now.
Okay, got it. It's about, now is the, the time. We talked about it, thought about it, and even written about it, but when we haven't, we haven't started yet. It seems like life is on hold. Nothing happens until action is taken. Entrepreneur Victor Kahn said, "Procrastination is opportunity." Procrastination, opportunity, obsession. Obsession. A starter visualized in the end and the begin. Do you have the mindset of a starter? If you're a starter, you create a picture of what you want to be, do, and have. Sidney Smith said, "To do anything in this world worth doing, we must not stand back shivering and thinking of the cold and danger, but jump in and scramble through as well as we can." Strong advice, are you waiting for the perfect set of circumstances and conditions? Unfortunately, there probably won't ever be any, so it will be to you your advantage and in your best interest to get started now. You don't want to miss your window of opportunity. King Solomon said, "He that observes the wind will not soak." In other words, if we are caught up with external circumstances, we will never take the necessary action to change, succeed, and prosper. We always will be in neutral. He continued, "He that regards the clouds will not read." If we're waiting for a sunny, perfect day to start, we will always be stuck. Once again, we're in neutral, wanting to move forward, but still in the same place. Declare that it's time to get started. Today is the day.
Thank you very much. Please rise, Troop sixteen oh six.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move on to the city attorney's report on closed session. We did have two items that we did hear. We are going back for another item. I'll let her report any action.
So far, no reportable action.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda at this time, we'll approve the agenda in whole, including consent calendar items. There are three on the consent calendar. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on the consent calendar itself? If not, these items will be approved or not at this time. See nobody coming forth. I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Move on to public comments. At this time pursuant to the Brown Act, any person may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council, not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the city council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments should be directed to the city council, and she'll be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. This is the point where if you have to make, we'd like to make a public comments, the blue card is at the back of the building there, and this is your opportunity to speak to the city council on items not on the agenda. If you're going to speak on an agenda item, that'll be at that time. You do not need to fill out a blue card. I have two public speakers today. First up, Mike Picardi, followed by Ron Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hit it twice. Councils, staff, and citizens. My name is Mike Picardi. I'm a resident of Desert Hot Springs. I just have a few announcements to make. The library bookstore, the Friends of the Library Bookstore, was rained out last Saturday. However, we will be open this Saturday, weather permitting. The building is below grade, so it kind of accepts water that it doesn't need. The address is six-six-five-eight-oh-eighth Street, and the hours are from ten to three. Please stop by and support your reading habit and the programs for your library. Also, the next Desert Hot Springs Classical Concert is on February twenty-fourth, which is a Sunday. These takes place, the rest of the concerts will take place at Grace Church, which is at one-seven-four-zero-zero Bubbling Wells Road. There is, it is free to the public, thanks to private donations and also donations from the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission, which is part of the city. This Saturday, this Sunday, the Sunday, the twenty-fourth, will be pianist Monica Leverett. And again, that's at four o'clock. They ask for donations either for the programs. The upside about this particular concert is we are going to be hearing it performed on a piano that was donated to the church through the efforts of Danny Holt, who has put the classical music center, classical music series together. This was donated by SoCal Pianos, and we'd like to give a shout-out to them and thank them for that, because this was a pay-it-forward. The piano from the church was given to the high school. So, a donation of one has turned into a donation of two. So the high school now has a library, has a piano because of this. There's another event coming up, which has to do with education. The Smart Academy Enrichment Program is going to be holding an event right here in the Call May on February twenty-seventh. That's from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We're going to be addressing and trying to put together and follow-up on what was the education committee that the mayor had started, and we're hopefully taking to a different place and a better level and get things done for the kids in our schools and join hands with everybody who wants to help our students, because, as you heard earlier, our students need help. The last and final thing is the Community and Cultural Affairs Commission meeting is one week from tomorrow. They are on the second Wednesday of every month at six o'clock, right here in the Call May, and the CCAC is getting involved in a lot of things. We have a large art and public places budget that we can work with, and we're working with the city and different developers to improve the look and feel, and also we're putting together programs for children for our community. That's another one of our mantras that we've been given to develop programs, and we're working on that. So I invite everybody to join us. That's six o'clock, second Wednesday of every month, right here in the Call May. Thank you again for your attention.
Thank you, Michael. Ron Reed?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Ron Reed. I have lived in Desert Hot Springs for nearly thirty years in two periods. I have a great regard for the appearance and reputation that the city has come through the years. No longer it is a dumping ground and actually is now a source of pride. This city and its residents have come a long way. I feel that the cell tower on Little Morongo Road is the first domino. If we allow this design as it is, then we will get a lot more of the same. It sets the bar very low to what entrepreneurs can and will get away with. It is very frustrating to me because I don't want to give anyone any reason to mock, make fun of, or laugh at Desert Hot Springs. There continues to be a push to clean up the city of eyesores, so why purposely allow one? My understanding is the approved design is that of a eucalyptus tree, and that would work. However, that is, however, what is on that site isn't even partially completed tree. I'm hoping that this caterpillar lamp can become a butterfly. It doesn't need to be a source of pride, just not a source of embarrassment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Is there anyone else that would like, do we have any other public comments? No? Do I? Yes, maybe? I'm sorry, you're, I don't know, your last name is?
Lozano.
Lozano. And Melissa, you have three minutes.
Oh, hi. My concern was not, one of the reasons why I moved out here, one of them, was the rent was really affordable. And with all the growth that's happening, which is awesome, because I have raised my kids here and I want to see a lot of growth, I think working families like mine is struggling because I'm a renter. So, when I moved here, I'm sorry, I'm like really nervous.
Take your time.
When I moved here, I rented a three-bedroom house for eight-fifty. And as the city grew and people moved in and bought houses, rent increased. And instead of gradually raising my rent, I was there for five years, and my owner was like, nothing against you, but you gotta go. So, I had to leave, and my, well, not my property, but the house I was renting that was eight-fifty went to sixteen. So, then I had to find other housing, which wasn't the nicest, but there's a lot of families that are like me that are struggling, that were basically stuck, and we want to stay in Desert Hot Springs, we want to be part of the growth, but we're basically getting shoved everywhere but here because we can't afford it. And rent control would be awesome because it would help us, because I think that I contribute to the city, but it's kind of not fair that I can't grow with it also because I'm, you know, stuck. I'm like so nervous.
Oh, you did fine. Is that everything you wanted to say?
Well, there's more, but yeah, I'm good for that.
You still got, you still got a minute and a half.
Oh, well then, I didn't put on the topic. We're like lighting in this city. Like, we want to see it, it's beautiful, it's growing. Put some streetlights, but yeah.
Talk to our city manager, he likes lighting, too. He's lighting up the roads.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and then I actually spoke to a couple of people on your board about my situation, and I went as far as, because I think a lot of owners take advantage of families in my situation because we can't afford to just pick up and move, so we're kind of stuck. And my landlord doesn't fix anything, and I was told by the code enforcement was like, well, we can go to your house, we could condemn it, but then you're homeless and you're stuck. So then I'm forced to just like, just shut up and live there, because I can't afford nothing else.
We never want you to shut up and just live, so with that said, if you wait around for our comments, we might have something that could help you in the future, okay? Did you get everything out?
Yeah.
Good job. Thank you. Tell me I said hi. Me, I was a fantastic softball player, played on my Little League team, so. With that said, I have no other public comments, but anybody like to speak in public comments at this time that have not had an opportunity to, that's not speaking on an item on the agenda? All right, we're going to move forward to the city manager's report and staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are extremely fortunate tonight to have our former battalion chief, former division chief, and now deputy chief of the county of Riverside, Eddie Moore here tonight, and he is going to introduce our new valley division chief, which we're also very excited about, especially since our stupid city manager had an opportunity to sit on the interview panel that chose Ty, so I think it's, it's, we're invested in this. So, chief?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and my partner staff, I'm not leaving you. I'll still be in here, so my responsibilities are the county area, but the county area from San Ycenote to Blythe, so I'm still, still your guy. I'm not going anywhere. I would never leave here. This is my favorite city, and I've already told him that, so. You know, some of these, some of these folks don't really realize that they're being interviewed every single day of their life, and I've been watching Ty grow for many, many years. He's been with the department for eighteen years, and when he was eligible to take this test, I kind of threw the lure out there a little bit and asked him, hey, would you ever be interested in a division chief job? And this job's not for everyone. So tonight, for me, he's been in the job, what, seven, six days now?
Five days.
Yeah. You know, I'm honored and privileged and excited to introduce Ty as my replacement for the division chief position. He will be your point of contact, but always have access to me, and when Ty's not here, I promise you that I will be here. So, with that, again, I'm excited to introduce Ty, and I'm going to stay since it's my last meeting, and then I'll let Ty say a few words.
Ty, you've done some time up here in Desert Hot Springs, haven't you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Mayor, council, and city staff, so the first thing I want to say is thank you. I am excited about the opportunity to serve as the fire representative for the City of Desert Hot Springs Fire Services, Cal Fire and Riverside County Fire Department. I know the city is progressive, it's growing, and it's well-established. I spent some time here as an engineer paramedic back in the mid-two thousands, so I definitely was happy when I was afforded the opportunity to come back here and serve the city. So I look forward to working with all of you guys and building my relationship with you all, and I will be twenty-four-seven on anything that you may need. I will be here. So, thank you again, and I look forward to working with you all.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
And also, Mr. Mayor, there has been a lot of discussion tonight, or not tonight, but in the last few days about the cell tower. I'd like to defer right now to our Public Works Director, Danny Porras, to talk about this a little bit, the process to where we got to today, and what the eventual look of that tower will be. Danny?
Thank you. Yeah, just, just a brief procedure-wise, cell phone towers are allowed in city and certain areas. In this case, it was allowed in that area, but it does require a conditional use permit. What does that mean? It does require proper notices, a public hearing, and a planning commission approval. This project in particular went through the conditional use permit process. The notices were sent out, and it became a public hearing through planning commission. It was originally submitted as a eucalyptus tree. During the public hearing, the planning commission approved the tower, but did not approve the design, and actually directed the applicant to resubmit a design that was more complimentary of the surrounding neighborhood and the surrounding buildings. The cell tower is located in a light industrial area on the east side of Little Morongo between Pearson and Two Bunch Palms, which is surrounded with light industrial and manufacturing buildings. It is actually located in a construction yard or contractor yard, and all around the actual proposed site, north and south of it, there are already conditional use permit approved for all industrial buildings with a contemporary, modern design. So the applicant came back and submitted other different light tower designs to the city, where myself, the senior planner, and also we had our planning commissioner chair sit in and review with the applicant various options. This is one of the options that was finally selected out of a few options that we went by, and this option is a contemporary-looking design that actually is reflective and complements the surrounding future buildings of our industrial area. Each, each ring or each circle around it is actually representing of a different service. Right now, we only have one. As more services get on board, it'll have different sizes, which will complement the actual pole itself. So they go through the entire process, we did approve it, and now it's being installed, and now we only has one ring, but more rings will be coming and will be installed as they complete the project.
Thank you, Danny. Now, wasn't there a concern reference, either a palm tree or a eucalyptus tree, or a cell tower resembling either of those, being decimated by the wind that is out in that area?
That's correct. Yeah, there's, has been. In the past, there was a fake palm tree designs that a lot of cities approved. Obviously, here in our city, that design did not work, different designs did not function just because of our high winds. It would just completely end up, end up being essentially a pole. The maintenance is what was really, is really difficult to keep up just because of the wind. This is one of the features that actually requires a little maintenance and doesn't require us to try to maintain or then maintain it as well.
Thank you very much.
We did have one more announcement. Chief, you had a very exciting announcement of a promotion yesterday, or was it two days ago?
Yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning, yeah.
Today's Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was Monday morning. I'm saying I've been working long hours or anything. Yes, we have done a little bit of restructuring, we're getting back to the point, sorry for dragging this out, but at one point in time, the structure of the police department was the chief and two commanders, and during the budget crisis, they went down to one commander. And so, we were able to recoup that commander position by moving some other positions around, and so we are happy to announce that Corinne Lindsay, who was one of our sergeants, was promoted to commander yesterday, and she's actually would be here, but she left today for a supervisory school that she is attending. But we're very happy it's going to bode well, not for the, just for the structure of the department and the city, but for long-term and succession planning. And it's great that we're able to show our diversity in that. We have one commander who's Hispanic, and now we have a female commander, so we're very, very pleased. So, um, we're very, very pleased with the direction we're going.
Thank you, that's a great announcement, uh, we're gonna move on.
And, sorry, Corinne, it's Corinne Pickett, she was recently married, so, um, so Corinne Pickett.
Alright, with that, we'll move on to mayor and council member comments, who would like to go first tonight? Mr. Gardner? You have music, too.
The musical interlude, at least I know if I'm talking too long, they'll play me off too, right? Your situation regarding rental, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, the city's human rights committee, which I used to chair before I was elected to council, uh, will be taking up that issue February, March, and April. Uh, they're doing an in-depth look at exactly the problems that you, excuse me, that you outlined. And I would encourage you to, uh, get in touch with them, uh, the, uh, there's a card back there on their last project on the Voting Rights Act that has an email address on it, and I'd encourage you to email them, find out when their meeting is, and I know they would love to hear from you and work with you on that because that's their next project. Um, as far as activities, the, uh, since our last meeting, um, the only thing that, uh, that on my calendar is that, uh, myself and council member Pi attended the League of California Cities New Council Members Academy, which was a very informative, uh, two-and-a-half-day session with a lot of information. And the one thing I wanted to bring before the, uh, the city and the, and the council is, that is pending up this year is, uh, for us to think about, is, uh, housing. Governor Newsom has a very, um, ambitious, shall we say, plan to increase housing in California and a number of bills are floating around up in Sacramento, most of which preempt city authority, which is something that I, that, that, that I believe the council and the citizens of the city don't want to see. Uh, us delegating our authority to anybody outside of the city as to determining housing density and locations and things like that. So, that's something that we're all going to have to really stay on top of during this current legislative session. And that's all the report I've got.
Thank you. Mr. Betts?
Yeah, um, attended the Southern California Association of Governments, uh, Regional Housing Needs Assessment, it's called RINA, it's a subcommittee. And as, uh, um, councilman Gardner alluded, uh, mentioned, state's in a big housing crisis, we've all heard about that. Mostly with housing being unaffordable. And so, this committee is working regionally to set, um, to deal with this issue in the six, seven California counties. The, um, it's really complicated work. Um, there's all kinds of conflicting instructions coming out of Sacramento. Uh, one that, uh, housing needs to be near transportation and near population centers. But on the other hand, all those population centers are already built out. And though, so how do you, um, then they go looking to areas where there's vacant land, to say, well, maybe that's where we can create these huge number of houses and the shortfalls is incredible. Uh, for San Diego, they just approved theirs for the San Diego region. And they're gonna have a thirty-four percent increase in the number of, uh, low and moderate income housing that they're creating. And they're expecting for the SCAG region to be even higher than that. As far as the state determining, um, you know, jumping in and determining land use issues, that's getting pretty significant. Uh, Housing and Community Development said that as long as what you recommend as a region is within one or two percent of what we think, well, then you're free to go ahead and put in your own plan, which basically means accept our numbers and make sure yours come and match with ours. On some of the things, density becomes a big issue and this is the last thing I get into because you could go on for two hours like the meeting did. But on density issues, just to give you an example, the state's talking about preventing cities from determining that, say, an apartment complex goes in and you get, uh, two-point-three parking spaces per unit in the complex. Well, that means that occupants each have a car and then the aggregate, uh, point-three becomes all the visitor parking. Well, they wanna put that down to point-nine, meaning less than one parking space per, um, per unit. Meaning, the, under the assumption that people who are in those, in those units only have one car per family, which doesn't become reality and the, and the, the problem becomes is if you have houses and other residential communities nearby, well, then all the parking gets taken up. So, if you're in a house and somebody's coming over to your house to visit, hey, I can't find parking to come see you guys, I had to park way down the street to find a space. So, it's not such an easy deal and, um, in some, some parts of the country, everything is very contiguous and alike, it's great. Um, but here in Southern California, it's all over the board, and so they're trying to make everything fit into one plan, so. Fortunately, I had some meetings with staff and they're all over this one, they've got it well in hand and doing what they need to do, so that's good. Uh, I'll be attending, uh, another meeting up at SCAG in Los Angeles on, uh, Thursday. Attended Sunline, um, most significant there was, uh, I, my seat at Sunline board was next to, uh, uh, the late Greg Pettis, the mayor of Cathedral City. And they had a little memorial set up there, um, you know, at, at his spot in the dais and, uh, it's very difficult to sit there. Attended his, um, anyhow, Greg was just a, a great guy for this valley and, um, region and state and attended his memorial service with the mayor. And, um, a lot of people there from all over the state attending that and, uh, anyhow, that, that was just a tough one to go through. Um, on the cell tower, we got the, uh, update, thank you for the update, Mr. City Manager, um, that was approved by the planning commission. And I just wanna, I don't wanna, um, I don't wanna sound like I'm scolding, I don't know the right way to say this, I'll just come out and say it, is that, um, this went through a public hearing process and so many times, it's very hard to follow what's going on. So, familiarize yourself with the city council website, there's something called agendas, and we made sure agendas is up there in the top right, it's been there for a long time. And I remember when I, before I got on the council, I used to watch very closely and try and pay attention. And there's always a challenge to find out what was going on soon enough to be able to affect the change. So, one of the things you do is just every couple of weeks, go look at the, every, well, it's once a month, go look at the planning commission agenda and see what's coming up. And then, uh, show up a public comment there and the best time to stop something you don't wanna see is right there at the public speaker podium before it gets built. And, um, so, I'm gonna agree with everybody else that, uh, I can't believe that a, um, that cell tower went there, I think it's just a horrible location. Horrible look, it looks like a lampshade, I was wondering, I was asked to go do some shopping for some end tables or maybe we could make the buildings that surround it look like end tables and turn it into art deco art anyhow, so.
I've been told art is in the eye of the beholder.
Yeah, well, that's what I was thinking when I saw those designs, so.
Yes.
Yeah, maybe. So anyhow, um, hopefully that will be corrected with the, uh, the future look of that thing. I do think we need a future agenda item, I don't know where the notice went out on that, maybe it was only to three hundred feet as a standard. But I think on something that's, uh, has such a wide impact, it's not just the people who happen to be within three hundred feet, but everybody that drives past it every day, it has an impact. And I think we need to up, up our public notification standards. So, something as significant as that isn't dependent on people having absolutely looked at the, um, the city website to see it's coming up, that there's more, more widely noticed. So, I would like to see that come on as a future agenda item. Attended, uh, super, supervisor Perez's swearing-in ceremony, very well attended. Um, just to quickly correct some information on the streetlight that's supposed to be going in down at, uh, was it Camino Aventura? There was some discussion, you see the stuff online where people think they know what they're talking about or blaming it on the, uh, the steel tariffs that have been imposed on steel from China, and so when you call and talk to the companies, you find out that, no, that's not it. First off, I think the Fed and the state require that all steel for, for streetlights must be US steel, not foreign steel. And that, uh, the reason is, is just a backlog, they're busy, I guess a lot of cities have ordered these things and it's just a pure backlog. And then one company that was making them before had, uh, gone out of business. And everybody's adjusting their production schedule, but they're all just slammed with orders is basically what's going on with that. So, we're gonna be looking at that situation for, what, a couple of more months before? Yeah. And so unfortunately, we've got a median, it was part of that project, was all supposed to come together and there's some other comments about why are those barriers there? And I'm, I'm sure, sure in consideration of the situation, we've gotten a great deal out of tops and barricades. And you can't just remove those to save money because if you have an accident, then there's a big problem.
Everything was on schedule based on our original delivery date. And so, once we put the, uh, the median in, we're obviously not going to tear it out at this point, so we have to make it as safe as humanly possible.
Yeah, so anyhow, um, you know, it's just one of those things that once in a while it comes along, it's unavoidable, staff's doing a great job and, uh, it's just, uh, everybody that produces those things are backed up. Uh, last couple of things here, um, I've got a community and cultural affairs commission appointment coming up and I would invite anybody that's interested in taking part in that, uh, committee, get to sit up here and help decide to, uh, decide the direction of the city when it comes to events and cultural events and other activities and art. And sure, like, see some applications, so please put them in, I'm gonna look through all those carefully. And then Eddie Moore, congratulations on, uh, the promotion to deputy chief. And I gotta say, we've had a great relationship in the city with Cal Fire. And you are by far and away the best person we've had sitting in that seat so far and Ty, I hope you, uh, do as well as he did, so. Um, anyhow, thanks for your services, community.
Mr. Volle?
I attended a regional access project foundation board meeting. I also attended Supervisor Perez's unofficial swearing-in ceremony. And, uh, along with, uh, council member, or Mayor Pro Tem Pi, uh, attended the, it's a very long name, One Future Coachella Valley Desert Hot Springs Family Alliance Team.
Good job.
That, that's it for me, thank you.
Ms. Pi?
January nineteenth, I attended the first community church, um, Martin Luther King Ceremony. January twentieth, the thirty-fourth annual Martin Luther King Junior Commemorial Celebration at the St. Paul Church in Palm Springs. One of the, uh, there were two keynote speakers and one was, um, a young girl from Palm, Palm Springs. And she spoke about, um, plausible hope, having hope for the future. Um, and she said, if you're put on one boat, it doesn't mean you have to stay in that boat. Turned around and it was our Sergeant Michelle Webb, who leads the, uh, Desert Hot Springs School, ROTC. And she also spoke about being in a boat. But her future has been realized and she talked about the stuff that she's gone through as a youth and who mentored her and why she went into the service and how she was not in a, in a boat because of mentoring. So, that was a good ceremony. And January twenty-two, Mission Springs Water District, um, they had, uh, an exploratory, uh, conversation about what happens with districts. Uh, Regional Access Project, it needs two new board members. So, if anyone is interested, please contact me and I'll follow it through for you. Uh, CVAG Homeless Committee. The, all of CVAG, all of the communities are trying to do the same thing, um, for the homeless. And Desert Regional Medical Group and CVAG are trying to figure out how they're going to coordinate together, together, and that should be on our next meeting. Homeless Committee, um, I also attended Emmanuel Perez, uh, oath of office, which was crowded, very crowded. But I was glad he had it here instead of Sacramento. January fifth, a joint meeting JPA Executive Committee and CVB Board of Director. I attended in place of council member Gardner. And one of the main things is, uh, A, the, um, vacation rentals have asked, um, the convention borough to market at them. And what they are thinking of doing is asking the city, uh, to do a pass-through to it. But Linda, they will pay us fees for monitor, monitoring that. Okay, and it wouldn't be a one, one percent tax. And I think that's enough.
Okay. Um, I attended, actually, let me start back, a couple of weeks ago, um, when I was first elected mayor, I met with the Coachella Valley Association of Governments Executive Director and Transportation Director. I talk about projects that our city council seem to be important to all our city council members. And so, that's what led to some of the grant funding we've had over the last few years. So, I decided after being re-elected that I would build that relationship again. And how I do that is I bring them up here and then show them their projects so they can physically touch them, drive through them, see them. And it really helps bring perspective, I think, to our transportation needs in our communities. So, I outlined some of the major arteries and, and roadways and, and things that the council has talked about for the last three years. Uh, and we've got some decision-making coming up pretty soon and some possible funding to help fix some of these roadways. Um, and so, maybe making some exciting announcements in the future on some of the things, uh, that have been brought to my attention by my fellow council members that have taken forth to transportation for them. Um, the Coachella Valley, uh, Chamber of Commerce has, has really taken a, uh, up some, they've opened up a, a, a location here in the desert. Man, let me start over, take two. The Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce opened up a location here. And it's exciting because they've been really working to bring, uh, better, um, uh, business opportunities to our community. So, they're part of our economic development plan moving forth. And so, I was able to meet with Josh, the CEO of the Coachella Valley Chamber of Commerce and talk about our future. And so, that was really exciting and we're gonna have some better announcements here coming up real soon. It looks like they're gonna host the State of the City, which I haven't done in three years. I've done more town hall meetings. And so, it's pretty exciting to see what's gonna be happening here in the near future. Um, I was asked to take a tour of Xavier Prep High School, which is a private high school in Palm Desert. And the reason I was asked to take a tour of that was because two percent of our population of the students here in Desert Hot Springs actually attend that high school. And so, I thought it was interesting to see where, where they're going and how they're, they're, they're moving forth in their education. Um, an overall education plan by our city has always been talked about and this is a piece of it. So, we had, uh, two instructors there, two teachers, that actually taught at Desert Hot Springs High that are very connected to Desert Hot Springs. They taught this young lady.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Stevens. And they taught Michael Burke and a few others, Ivan Sewell.
Physics?
Yes, physics, he still teaches physics. And so, he gave us a personal tour of the high school and showed us what students are doing there and what opportunities and what great scholarship opportunities. Just because it's private doesn't mean it's out of the reach of anybody, so. It, it was a great opportunity to be another option for students looking for higher education. I met with Dr. Lyons, the superintendent, and not planned that day, but I did that day. Uh, I try to meet with her about a couple of times a year to talk about the educational opportunities here at our local schools and where they're going. She talked a lot about One Future, which, uh, if you were here for presentations, you saw what they were doing for our community. And so, it was really, uh, nice to hear where we're going. Uh, the PSA Academy, which is a public, uh, safety academy, actually received, uh, grant funding to start, uh, construction soon on their building, which will be a, it's mirrored after a fire station and I believe, uh, they're gonna have police components in there, all this stuff for public safety for the future of what our students are moving towards with their career pathway, if it is public safety. So, it's really exciting to see what they're doing at the high school now. Once a year, the Riverside County Transportation Commission meets, um, uh, in the desert for their workshop. But this year's chairman is Supervisor Washington from Temecula, so where do we meet? In Temecula, not the desert. So, we drove down to Temecula, it's usually a two-day workshop, but this year was a one-day workshop. It was Thursday, January twen- thirty-first, and it was pouring rain in Temecula and it was, it was, uh, need to get out of the valley and meet with all our, our different cities and leaders and supervisors on issues that face transportation. And what happens in this workshop is they kinda set the stage for the next year and where we're going. Something that hasn't been done for many, many years is setting the priorities as major, if you don't understand the funding for, for transportation, it comes from the state through, through our commission of the county, each county has one. Our county, every city and five supervisors each have a seat on it and I'm the representative for the city of Desert Hot Springs. And when you set priorities, when you're building, uh, the ex- the expansion of the ninety-one freeway, that's not something that takes place overnight, that's a, that was almost a ten-year project. And so, millions and millions of dollars are going into this project over time and it puts other priorities back, sets them back. So, the commission has finally gotten to a point where things have kinda shifted in Riverside County and what are the priorities? When I started, the priorities were the Coachella Valley, building all the over, interchanges and overpasses. And then we were really focused on the ninety-one extension, ninety-one, two fifteen, um, sixty, uh, overchanges there and then the expansion of the ninety-one. And recently, we've started the- And recently, we've started the expansion of carpool lanes at the 15. But there's a lot of focus on the Southwest County and how the traffic is bogged up there. This all relates to us here in the Coachella Valley, because when we travel or commute to these areas, it does relate, because it does end up backing up. So I think in the future, if it was perfect world, I am sitting on a committee that will help prioritize the future of transportation now, is that the Banning Beaumont Pass was talked a lot about at this meeting. The Southwest District in Temecula was talked a lot about this district in this meeting, so I see a lot of focusing on funding. Again, it's close to us, because what's going to happen is, as you see, any busy weekend, any busy holiday, it is almost impossible to get out of the valley now. But soon, one of the projects that have been approved is the truck climbing lanes on the, going west on 60. So when you hit the 60-10 split, starting construction late this summer, there'll actually be a lot of public information put out about this. It'll be down to one lane for about six months, so be careful when you're traveling through the Banning Pass to the Moreno Valley area, because it will be backed up. And then last, I attended with Mr. Betts, the celebration of life for Mayor Pettis, who passed away a couple of weeks ago due to complications from surgery. He lived a very, very productive life as a public servant, and they had a very nice video for him that was narrated by one of the council members and showed his life, and you think you know somebody, but you really don't until you listen to everything they've done. And he was a leader when it came to LGBT communities. He was a leader for Cathedral City, and he was definitely a leader for this region. Him and I have differences when it comes to national politics, but when it came to regional politics, he was always there, he was always calm, and he was a bright spot for this Coachella Valley, and he will be missed. All right. With that said, we're gonna move on to our first item, which is a public hearing. This is item number seven, an ordinance amending Title 17 to amend various sections of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code related to housing, including supportive and transitional housing, emergency shelter, accessory dwellings units, and other amendments to harmonize with state law. That's our city attorney, Ms. Marai.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item before you this evening is an ordinance. It does various things. I wasn't gonna get into much of it, but in a nutshell, what this does is, it has taken various state laws from the past number of years. I had a chance to look at our residential zones and update, update our zoning in compliance with state law. I also had a chance to work with the housing person at MIG, who I worked with in drafting this ordinance. And basically, this ordinance is in place to try to accomplish about, I'm gonna say about 95% of everything, in terms of getting everything into compliance with state law. What I mean by that is that we are in the process of updating our general plan. In that process, we will be updating our housing element as well. And so this ordinance serves as a stopgap, if you will, between now and then. Once our housing element moves forward, I'm gonna take another look at our housing zoning code, the housing portions of the zoning code, to amend it to comply with that housing element. But this is a very comprehensive ordinance, pretty much allowing things from accessory dwelling units, which now are to be allowed by right. As the city council recognized during some of its council comments, housing is a huge issue in the state of California. And many times, there is housing law kind of tying the city's hands, if you will, requiring that the cities throughout the state of California allow certain uses. One of those in particular is accessory dwelling units, so that's in here. There's also, I could do what you'd like, Mr. Mayor, I could go into this a little bit more, or I could leave it as this is pretty much a comprehensive update as a stopgap between now and when the housing element will be adopted. It is a public hearing. It did go before the Planning Commission. Planning Commission did recommend it to the city council.
Leaving it at that unless there's specific questions. That's okay with you?
Got it.
All right. We're entertaining questions of staff from the city council at this time.
I have one question. So in regards to the emergency shelters, I read in there that they'd be allowed as a permitted use without a conditional use or other discretionary permit by right?
Correct.
So I totally understand that, but given that, would we, by any chance, be able to have some say in, say, for example, the design? Or is that something that we just have to accept as however it's proposed?
As far as I understand, it is pretty much by right. They have to, we have to, as a city, allow emergency shelters in a zone in the city. They do have to comply with, obviously, building codes, standards, things like that. But it's my understanding, and Rebecca might be able to, she might know a little bit more about this, but it's my understanding that those facilities, we don't really have too much discretion in terms of what they actually look like. They do have to comply with setbacks, landscape standards, regular kind of city standards that we have, but it would not be a discretionary approval, let's say, if they had, you know, a certain kind of citing, you know, and we would require something different.
Thank you.
Any, Mr. Betts?
Can you give us a little better description of what these emergency shelters are? And is the state mandating these?
They are. Yep.
SB 2, back in 2011, required that cities actually allow emergency shelters. These are pretty much emergency homeless shelters. Every city in the state of California is required to allow these shelters in a zone in the city. So the answer is yes, it is required, and they're called emergency shelters under state law. They're otherwise known as homeless shelters.
Did we set a zone in this document here for where those go, or is it city-wide?
Yes, it's on page 55. And that's what I believe Councilmembers of Vala was speaking about. It is in the RH zone.
RH means?
RH is resid, I will defer to our...
Residential high density.
Which I believe was, I think it's stipulated in SB 2, right, that they have to be around someplace that has access to, like, transportation, and yeah.
Most of our high residential areas are in the inner city, correct? Well, yes.
That's, that would be one of those that we designated for on the other side of 62, correct?
No, you lowered the density.
That was heightened.
Yeah, you lowered it.
We did?
Yes, that's what you wanted.
Well, that's what you want.
You wanted to lower the density. All right, I have nobody else in the queue. Anybody else wanna speak? All right, I'll open the public hearing at this time, and we'll take testimony in favor. Anybody that'd like to speak in favor of this can come forth now, state your name and plead your case. See, nobody's standing. We'll move on to, anybody who wanna take testimony in opposition of this, of these ordinance? See, nobody coming forth. I'll move on to anybody in neutral position, just wants to be heard. No? All right. We'll close the public hearing at this time. Any more city council discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance amending Title 17 to amend various sections of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code related to housing, including supportive and transitional housing, emergency shelters, accessory dwelling units, and other amendments to harmonize with state law. The ordinance will all be returned at the next council meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Thank you, Mr. City Clerk. We're gonna move on to the administrative calendar. Our first item is the Joint Disclosure, Identity, and Litigation Defense Agreement with Atkinson Engineering, Inc., et al. Ms. Marai.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As the city council knows, we are currently in litigation with the Sierra Club. Just for the record and for the public's information, it's, the Sierra Club, Center for Biological Diversity, has sued the city of Desert Hot Springs and Atkinson as the real party in interest. The item that you have before you is, it's a very common document when both the city and a real party in interest are sued. Basically, the parties have very similar uncommon legal interests, and it is agreement, it's an agreement between the city and the real party in interest that they will pretty much, where they have commonalities, where they will pretty much cooperate and work together and not duplicate efforts. These kind of agreements are also appreciated by the courts, because the courts don't like duplication, obviously. So what this agreement does is it, is it pretty much states that the city works, will work in conjunction with and cooperate with the real party in interest, which is Atkinson, considering for the most part, I would say, probably much for the all part, the cities as well as Atkinson's interests are aligned, to the extent that we find, meaning we, myself, Ted Stream, who's a special litigation counsel, finds that our interests diverge in any way. It doesn't preclude the city from filing motions and things like that to where our interests would diverge. In addition, it also, it also, this agreement also solidifies and reaffirms the indemnification and litigation defense required by Atkinson, who's the real party in interest. In doing so, the agreement has put together, I had a chance to discuss with Atkinson's counsel, they've agreed to deposit $20,000 to be drawn in litigation expenses. As the city goes ahead and incurs those expenses, we'll draw from that deposit. And if and when we hit that $20,000 mark, they will go ahead and replenish monies in that account to where the city can actually draw down from that account. With that, if there's further questions or anything I didn't explain, Ted Stream is obviously here to talk about the agreement as well.
Open up the public comments this time. Would anybody like to speak to this item? See, nobody coming forth. I'll close public comments. I'll start with council member comments. Mr. Betts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start with just a couple, with a real basic question. We did a title search to make sure that these are actually the parties of interest, that there's no liens or anything else on this property that would designate maybe somebody else as a different owner?
I did not perform a title search. I don't know if anybody else has.
Anybody perform a title search? I would suggest that we do a title search just to make sure that somebody has standing that they think it's been through some ownership change on that property. Couple of things with the agreement. The, the biggest concern at this is the amount. It's $20,000. And at the partner rate of $350 an hour, you take that and you're looking at about 57 hours worth of work on this, which I'm not imagining is very much in what this one's gonna end up being. The question I have is, has a, any type of litigation estimate cost been provided?
Yes.
And what is the?
I provided the litigation estimate cost to the city council in an email a few weeks ago, that we believe, and of course Ted Stream is here, he could correct me if I'm wrong, we think the litigation amount would probably be between $75,000 and $100,000.
Okay.
And that's on the high side, frankly, because we're hoping to, hoping things will go a little bit more smoothly.
Okay. So we've had some experience with suit against the city by Center for Biological Diversity and the Sierra Club in the past. And were we able to find out how much that settlement payment was? Did we ever find that in our records, Mr. City Manager?
No, as I said earlier today to you, no.
Okay, so anyhow, I'm just gonna go from my recollection. It was somewhere around $140,000. And I know that Coachella Valley Association of Governments has also gone up against Center for Biological Diversity and the Sierra Club in a similar matter, and their legal bills were over $100,000 when they ended up having to settle. This one's gonna go higher than this, is my guess. I don't think $20,000 is really enough to cover this, but it should be higher. The question is, is, so it draws down to zero and then they replenish? Is that the way this is supposed to work? I would be much more comfortable if this would have a base amount, so that there's always some funds on deposit, rather than, you know, so once funds reach a bottom threshold of X, then a deposit would be made to replenish those funds. You're running it down to zero, and that seems to be, to me, not as much. How much of, has the city expended any legal resources on this matter already?
We have expended legal resources. I don't know what that amount is. Atkinson is fully aware, his council's fully aware, that they need to indemnify, reimburse, and hold the city harmless for every dime that the city has spent.
Okay, so, but does this agreement cover those amounts going forward, or does it cover past amounts that we've already expended on this?
It would also be for any amount expended on the litigation. So if your question...
I'm talking about any legal expenses that we've incurred with, when we got this, when did we get served with a suit?
I'm sorry, what was that?
We got served with notice of suit, right?
Mm-hmm.
And we had to go read that, right?
Correct. It would cover...
Do we read those things for free?
No, and it would cover any and all costs associated with the litigation. So if I needed to read the complaint, or if Mr. Stream needed to read the complaint, that would be included.
Okay, so out of this...
Meaning, it would be covered.
All right, so out of the $20,000, irrespective of the date that this thing is executed, any of those past things, when this motion is made to approve this, will include any of those past charges of...
Correct.
Them and you.
Correct.
Okay, that's good. And under, under item D, I don't wanna get too technical in here, but it's 14D, it says, "In the event such dispute, the city and real parties saw exercise good faith and efforts to resolve the dispute." But it doesn't say what happens if they don't. Shouldn't it have some language in here where the city will have final say in this matter? I mean, we're not really the party. We're being sued, but it's their project, it's not ours. Shouldn't there be something in here? I mean, what if they say, well, sorry, we just can't come to agreement? And the agreement is over, say, a legal bill, a legitimate charge, and we say, well, you owe it, he says we don't. And all it says here is, they'll use good faith efforts to resolve the dispute, but it doesn't have anything here that says how that will be resolved and who has the final say. And then, unless I'm reading this thing correctly, on item 19, it says, "Effective date termination, that this agreement will continue in perpetuity unless it is terminated upon written notice by any party."
The resolution of the case.
So he enters into an indemnification agreement, puts up $20,000, the money goes away, we sit there and say, hey, this thing's going upwards of $75,000. We've already incurred these legal costs, we're obligated to pay these parties this money. And he says, well, you know what, I'm sorry, here's my 30 days notice, I wanna get out of this agreement.
That's not how it would be intended to read, nor how a court would interpret that. Basically, what that means is that this agreement goes on until perpetuity, until the litigation ends, or until absolutely everything is done with respect to this, this litigation.
Okay, well, it's got the sentence.
I could go ahead and have Ted Stream talk about that a little more, if Ted Stream does not have a copy of the contract. Let me go ahead and give that to him.
So, you know, I don't really need to, if you're gonna address these in the final, you know, when this motion goes, it encompasses that, you know, what you said there is, I'm fine, as long as that's in the record. It's just as long as if it's terminated, that they just can't say, hi, sorry, I'm backed out of the indemnification agreement. In exchange for us going into this process, they're the ones with a financial interest in this project. We don't profit when that project goes through, they do. And I just don't think they, unless I'm reading it wrong.
As to that, if I can, Mr. Mayor, council members. As to that particular issue, that really, that provision really goes to whether or not this agreement continues. It does not go to the indemnification requires of the requirements of the developer. Those survive this agreement. These simply reaffirm that agreement, and then it sets up rules so that the two, well, the respondent and the real party in interest, the city is the respondent, the developer, Atkinson Engineering, is the real party in interest, so that they can actually defend together and compare notes without really invading the attorney-client privilege. It's a document where you can share information. The other part of the document, as you point out, council member, is simply reaffirming what the development requirements are regarding indemnification. Whether this agreement continues or not, those separate indemnification requirements... Whether this agreement continues or not, those separate indemnification requirements, those continue on no matter what. So, yes, either party can terminate this agreement and cease cooperating with each other, and I could imagine a situation where the city might do that.
Do we have somewhere else where there's a separate indemnification agreement with them, or is this it?
I've never seen a, a development that did not have an indemnification requirement, I wasn't-
We, we do, as a matter of fact, if I may, we have an indemnification clause in very specific language in the development agreement that the city council approved with the developer. So the development agreement as well has indemnification in that agreement. This is separated apart, and it reaffirms that.
If that development agreement is determined null and void, because that goes to the heart of the plaintiff's action, does that end up meaning that that clause is null and void?
I'm sorry? I, I didn't understand.
We have a development, the indemnification we have is contained in development agreement, but isn't that at the heart of, their, their suit says the development agreement was drawn improperly, was created improperly? So, we're getting into too much here. I, I don't want to play lawyer, because I'm not any good at it. But I just had these basic questions, and the, the heart of the question is, is that 20,000 is not enough, and that, that we should have better, better protection in this. And it's not just me saying so, we've got prior experience on this, especially with these two plaintiffs. We ended up playing lawyer for another developer, or agreeing to be the lawyer for another developer, and it cost us $140,000. And I would say, the prudent thing to do, we say, "Fine, we're going to go into this, we got disjoint interest in this matter, but put on the full amount of the deposit, put on deposit the full amount that this, we anticipate this will cost, and then if there's any leftover, then we'll refund it to you," rather than taking it down to a zero dollar. And so I belabored that point enough, and that would be what I would like to see. I'm not going to make a motion, because I'm sure it won't go my way. So anyhow, just leave it at that, thank you.
All right, with that said, I have nobody else in the queue, I'll entertain a motion. There is a motion in a second, any more discussion?
Motion passes, would Councilmember Betts oppose?
Item number nine is discussion on cannabis storefront and non-storefront retail, our deputy city manager, Luke Rainey.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and city council members. So the purpose of this discussion item is to obtain direction from the city council regarding the addition of a permitted cannabis retail use. Currently cannabis retail is permitted in the city's commercial zone, and each dispensary requires both a conditional use and regulatory permit. And by resolution, the city council has limited this to 16. The state of California has removed references to the word dispensaries, and they have separated retail into two categories. So when looking at cannabis retail statewide, we have two classifications, we've got storefront retail and non-storefront retail. Storefront retail is a physical storefront, and they're like our current city dispensaries that are in the commercial zone. And non-storefront retail sells by delivery, and they do not have a space that's open to the public. So, non-storefront retail is not currently permitted without one of the 16 approved permits. And non-storefront retail is also not specified anywhere in the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. And over the last several months, city staff has been contacted by several developers who will all have interests in non-storefront retail activities. These developers are either in the industrial zone, or they're in specific plans, and their major business is cannabis manufacturing, and they are looking to sell and distribute statewide. So the main question of the discussion is whether or not the city wants to permit non-storefront retail. If the answer is no, then you don't do anything, nothing changes. If the answer is yes, then staff has been analyzing the benefits and issues that come along with that. So the benefits are increased revenues and additional cannabis sales methods to businesses. So if you recall the strategic plan discussion from last October, which we will be bringing back at the next meeting, the city council talked about four major goals. And after staff analysis, we've determined that non-storefront retail supports two of those four goals that you'll be looking at. One of the goals is that you want us to be a business-friendly city, so increasing the options available for retail sales to business models makes us more friendly to businesses. The other goal that you identified is that you wanted to strengthen the city's long-term financial position, so by increasing revenues, that will support that goal as well. But along with issues, I'm sorry, along with benefits, of course, comes some issues. And staff has been analyzing these issues, and we've determined that the two major ones are the confusion that will be determined between the two different kinds of retail uses, and also ensuring that we have appropriate zoning requirements. So, to approach the issues that come along with those benefits I discussed before, staff is taking an approach that wants to encourage new retail activities, while at the same time clearly defining between non-storefront retail and existing, excuse me, between storefront retail and non-storefront retail use. So, we have identified three parameters. The first one is the industrial zone. Non-storefront retail use is associated with manufacturing for large markets, including extraction, and so the industrial zone will be the most appropriate area to address related issues like safety, odor control, delivery vehicles, and distribution activities. The second parameter is to limit cultivation to 99 plants. Limiting retail uses of, use of up to 99 plants avoids providing a direct method of sales for major cultivators. And the third parameter for non-storefront retail use is to only deliver and sell outside of the city. This will clearly differentiate the uses and provide equitable retail opportunities when considering our local dispensary storefront retail establishments in the local market. Now that being said, non-storefront retail, although their sales focus statewide, can still sell their specific products to residents by partnering, partnering with any of our, any number of our existing dispensaries within the city. So I'm going to leave this on a chart here that lays out the comparison of the current dispensary storefront retails on the left with non-storefront retail uses on the right to be used for reference during your discussion. And staff is recommending that the council provide us direction on how to move forward. If council reaches a decision that matches what you see here in this chart, then city staff can be directed to prepare an ordinance to amend our municipal code to replace dispensaries with storefront retail without any changes to permit requirements, including that limit of 16, and add non-storefront retail as a permitted conditional use in the industrial zone with sales delivery only to recipients outside of the city, and uses to include manufacturing, distribution, and cultivation, limited to 99 plants. That concludes my staff report, and I'll take any questions.
Good report, thank you, Mr. Rainey. I'm going to open up to the public first for public comments, at that time you'll have three minutes, once you state your name. Please come forth.
My name's Christopher Ralph with Rubicon Outreach. Thank you, Mr. Rainey, for that presentation. I, we are fully in support of this change of an ordinance. I had spoken to quite a few of you, the city council members, about this specific issue regarding the ability to manufacture customized medication for patients who actually need it for specific conditions. Making this change specifically for our, the effect of our business will allow us to actually work directly with a consumer, with a patient, and actually receive the valuable feedback that we need to tailor the medications more for either their individual need or for their specific condition. So for us, this is obviously a net benefit overall. From a tax revenue from the city, obviously receiving the, the revenue from residents outside of the city, to me, is of course a, a net benefit. So without being able to hurt any of the dispensaries here locally by having any competition with, you know, having any number of these facilities open up just because it's an online retailer, you don't want to hurt those 16 facilities or however many facilities that are licensed here. So I think by creating this ordinance, it perfect, strates the perfect balance of what's needed, in my opinion, to accomplish our goals, but obviously for any other business that's coming in to help increase the revenues. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to take that, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Ryan Fingerhut with High Road Consulting, thank you, council members, for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am speaking in, I don't know if this is supported or not support of this amendment, as I, I would like to offer that it be tweaked. One of the things I'd like to observe is that the industrial area, most of the properties that are properly located with utilities, sewage of that nature are already have construction on them, many of those being cannabis cultivation facilities and manufacturing facilities. So I think the reality of these types of retails is that they're going to have to be co-located with those types of facilities. So the 99 plants and manufacturing, I think, is largely just going to be a matter of co-location. Now, that can be a great advantage to the city, because by having these businesses co-located, this will greatly reduce some of the internal costs, the middlemen that are necessary in order to get the product to the consumer, and therefore it will create the ability to have lower, lower-cost products for the consumer, because there won't be some, as many people taking a cut. But that being said, by outlawing it from being able to deliver to people within Desert Hot Springs, you're basically saying that that advantage will be given to people who don't live here, but the people here won't be able to cut out the middleman and get a lower price for their medicine or for their consumer product, but instead will have to pay the full price they currently are. Also, I'd like to offer that if that is something that the council is not willing to entertain at this particular time, they might want to consider making an exception for hotels. These would be people who are already coming from outside of the community, and so wouldn't impact the customer base of the dispensaries that are currently existing. Also, this would help to promote cannabis tourism, as now we would be able to start to bring in things like tourism agencies, hotels can maybe become connected with some of these cannabis companies, create tours, and then people could come back and get products delivered to them. I understand Mr. Rainey's contention that there are 16 dispensaries, and you could partner up with them to try to create deliveries within the area, but I politely disagree, because I believe that if that was something that was going to happen, it probably would have been happening by now, as I'm sure everybody's aware, people have been trying to, to do that, and, you know, to, to become more progressive on cannabis policies. And unfortunately, for various business reasons, that just doesn't seem to be working out, if only because, well, quite frankly, those 16 dispensaries have a lot of power in that type of negotiation, and I believe that people have been unable to form beneficial relationships with them, but I can't speak for all of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Next speaker?
Mayor, Mayor Protem, Michelle Holman, I'm also Rubicon Outreach, and I also reside here in Desert Hot Springs, very good job. I attend many city council meetings just to watch and follow and see what's happening in our city. I wanted to let you know what Rubicon Outreach does. We're a company that customizes a medication, not just a joint, we don't give somebody a joint. We look at your condition and every ailment of your condition, we tailor it to your body. It's not anything anybody in this industry is offering. And here in Desert Hot Springs, I have visited numerous of these dispensaries, and I can tell you, 90% of them want our products on their shelf. They want our services offered to them for their patients that need the medicine, the way they need their, their body accepts it. I'm very much in support of what Mr. Rainey and what Ms. Rahi has possibly come together and proposed to you, and hope that it moves forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Final call? Close public comments. Mr. Betts, your first in the queue.
Thank you. You know, I don't think I've seen an industry that's more over-regulated than this one. I, if, I'm wondering what day marijuana is actually going to be legal in California, because at the rate new regulations get heaped on it, it gets more illegal every day. When I first heard about this, I said, "Well, you know, the explanation is, is that somebody who's got a manufacturing facility wants to do sales to people outside, outside retail sales from their factory." And I thought, "Okay, so what would be the problem?" I don't see anything that the council has said no, yet we defaulted to that's not allowed, because I guess we have to regulate it. To me, it seems the normal course of business with any other business, if you want to do that type of sales model, it's there, it exists, and I don't see what the difference is, except for this is marijuana, I guess. We'll get over that one of these days. The, to me, retail storefront, and what we didn't want to see was traffic, foot traffic, going in and out of retail trap, well, like, comes in our hair salon, people come in and out, people go into Rite Aid or any other storefront, that's properly handled in the retail area. And so we said, "In the retail area, we wanted 16 dispensary permits," and that's what we still call them dispensaries. And then we decided also that we didn't want the manufacturing setting up retail, because we didn't think the industrial area was suited to retail. But I didn't see anywhere in here, and I says, "Just because it's," and we had this continuing disagreement, "just because it is silent in our code means we can't do it." I think if it's silent on a code, then you can go ahead and do it until somebody makes a law that says you can't. Anyhow, I don't know what, I don't understand this part about 99 plants, I don't know what that means. I didn't pick up on what that had to do with anything. I presume there's some provision in here, we're going to collect the retail sales tax on this, is that the way retail sales tax works? If it originates from here, no matter where it goes in California, then we get the money? So when I heard about this, I'm thinking, "Well, I can't imagine anybody wants to say no to that provision, that sounds pretty darn good to me, we can get sales not only here." And I think that's a very good point that raised, why would it limit sales, retail sales within our own city? I didn't understand why our residents don't get the benefit of that, that system. The only thing I'm looking at restricting is, I do not want retail foot traffic going in and out of these manufacturing facilities, they're set up completely different than that. And then I understand that, that we have three projects with specific plans, and isn't that, but I understand our discussions, that this is the item we're working on right now on this one?
No, that's a different item.
That's down the line?
That's a different item.
Okay, all right. So, and I, and I did meet with, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
Michelle.
With both of you, I met with you guys, and that was a good informative meeting. So I, I can't understand what would be the problem with this. What's the logic of the 99 plants? Is we saying you can only do 99 plants, or what, what do I care how many plants they do? Why is that my concern?
Currently, we have in our ordinance for dispensaries, future storefront retail, the requirement that they can have 99 flowering plants. If we don't put a limit on the plants, large cultivators would then open up a, a retail location that is non-storefront, and they will put all of our, our other businesses out of business, all of our retail storefronts.
Who gets the 99 plant, you're saying, that large cultivators that are already in town can't do retail sales?
That's correct.
I don't know why not. They, they can't do retail storefront sales, that's the only distinction I mean.
Because you haven't legislated that.
Huh?
They, they can't do that.
They're distributors.
So what is these?
They distribute to a licensee.
I got it, but they're going to do retail mail order sales, is basically what you're talking about here, right?
No, so the way that the licenses are set up is, there is a distributor, which are large-scale cultivators or distributors, they have the ability to distribute product from a licensee to a licensee. And that is essentially from a cultivator to a dispensary or storefront or non-storefront retailer, who will then push the product to the end user, consumer. The non-storefront retailers would have the ability, as we've proposed in this, or this discussion, to both distribute and deliver their product, either distribute their product to another licensee-
Produce, to produce.
They can manufacture and then either distribute their product to another licensee like a storefront retailer, which is where we are trying to get them to partner with one of the local storefront dispensary owners, and that's where that limitation of the delivery within the city comes into play. Or they can deliver their product from licensee to end user, consumer. So the reason, going back to the original question, that we placed the 99 plant limit in there is because we were very cognizant and aware of our current dispensary owners, and not wanting to put another license type in here that could essentially potentially put them out of business.
Okay, I think with the retail dispensaries, that's where I would disagree, is, I mean, they're going to have competition from all kinds of places, there's going to be mail order from everywhere, I mean, other cities are going to allow mail order in the desert, they have that competition already. The advantage they have is they have a retail operation where you can actually walk in a store, look at what you're getting, and the whole retail experience, that's their, that's their competitive advantage. Somebody who's ordering through them has a different advantage, where they're getting something like a compounding pharmacy, where they're getting something specifically to their needs and working back and forth, and there's people like to shop that way. I don't see as one is competing with the other, and I don't see it's our job, really, to worry that much about it. If we're going to, if they were going to have foot traffic coming in and out, that I see as competing with the- I see as competing with the dispensaries. I don't see that this is, this is like an Amazon-type business. In any other manufacturing environment, you got a manufacturer, you can either sell to a distributor, you can sell directly to the end-user. I've never seen the government sit there and say, well, sorry, you can't sell to the end-user. That's just purely a business model decision, and the market decides how that's going to work. So where all that's going, I don't know, but I'm not agreeing with the restrictions that you would have put on this, and I'll go back to what I said originally, is I don't see why we would even say you, why we even have to permit this other than to put something in place to make sure that we can collect the taxes, because we always want to do So I'm, I'm not with this presentation, but I'm certainly with the idea of being able to do that, and I do, and the only other thing I would say is that there just can be absolutely zero retail traffic going in and out of whatever this facility is. It has to be strictly a mail order. Is that a proper way to view it, as a mail order operation?
Yeah, correct. As a matter of fact, it's under state law that they cannot be open to the public either, non-storefront retail.
Okay, so I just see it as something different than storefront retail. It has nothing to do with it. I would just say yes, but don't put the 99 plant restriction and don't put a geographic restriction on within the city limits.
I need the screen back. Ms. Pye?
This came about for several reasons. One, the state made changes and we're trying to stay in compliance with that. The other is this council, I wasn't on it at the time, but this council decided that manufacturers under a certain, what is it, 50 feet or more, were able, how am I trying? Could go to a dispensary, one of the three that were left that no one had, and try to partner with them, and that they could have a dispensary. Well, the partnering didn't happen, but the council said, you can do this. So how do you fix it? What?
I got, I got, I guess it's a future agenda.
Yeah, Jen, that's the, that's the other item on the agenda that we're talking about.
But for storefront, storefront and non-storefront, isn't that how we got here?
No, we got here because of the state definitions have changed, and due to the, due to state law, we want to keep our definitions exactly like state laws we have throughout this entire process.
But doesn't that flow, flow into that?
A little bit, yeah. I mean, obviously, if we kept it with 16, we weren't, we're going to allow non-storefront with the 16. The last few that are left would cost these businesses like Rubicon a significant amount of money because now they're asking for ridiculous amounts for the right to apply for one of these permits.
So if we change this storefront, non-storefront, then we're doing what we said in the council, telling you, you can do a dis, it's not a dispensary now, but, okay.
Yeah, it would maintain our 16 storefront retail operations, or 16 abilities to apply for that, and then this would be a new permitted use.
Right.
Which is non-storefront retail in the industrial area.
Which, we said you could do, but you couldn't do because you couldn't get the three to participate.
That is the other item.
Okay.
That's the other item.
So that's how we got here?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay. And you said this works good for you. I told you, I couldn't do it for you. But this was a way to do it to make sure we have it clear, retail, non-clear, that may work for you, but I just want to make sure we weren't doing it for you. So that's why, Mr. Betts, we're going through this process, because we couldn't do it. We told people they could do it, and now in order to work it, we have to do what the state is saying. I'm done.
And my comments are simple. I just think it's a, it's a great opportunity to align with the state and what they're trying to do, so it's more defined. I guess sometimes a lot of people walk in my office and want to do things in this community that have not been permitted through our ordinances, and then we come to find out the state has regulations, but we don't. So I think the staff did a fantastic job. I've never been a big fan of the 99 plants. I think it should be a square footage. Now, don't get me wrong on this, on the retailers, I think it should be a small square footage. I just think it's easier to, for compliance reasons, that we don't have to walk in and decide what's baby, what's not a baby, what's a clone, what's not a clone. I don't know what all terminology is. I should by now, but I don't. You know, what adult plant is, all that stuff. I just think it should be a square footage, and what you can grow in a square footage is up to you, but that's something that could be discussed in a strategic plan that's coming forth in the future. So I think we need to move forth with this, so you can get started with what you're doing and move on without complicating it anymore, because this clarifies it, and there's nobody can turn back and go, well, I thought he said this, or she said that at this point. So with that said, I'll, oop, I got one more in the queue.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I also agree with the distinction between non-storefront retail versus storefront retail to align with the state, and I, I like the way, the way it's written. I see Councilmember Betts's opinion on the, on the, leaving it open to delivery within the city. I know in the past, we've had a lot of conversations about trying to balance the needs that everybody has within the city, and so sometimes when we say, okay, you can, you know, because everybody wants to do everything, so sometimes it gets a little difficult, and I, and I'm okay with limiting this as-is based on just delivers statewide or online. I'm okay with limiting that to outside of the city boundary and leaving that as a concession to our existing cannabis storefront retail operations. That's, the last thing I want is for all of them to show up and say, well, now you gave them that concession, now we want something else in return, because now you kind of, you gave somebody a leg up over, over us with that, and you've always said that you were going to help us by limiting, letting us do the delivery within the city. So I, I just don't want to hear that later. I'm okay with leaving this as-is and limiting it to outside of the city.
Can I ask a question? We're going to be dealing with this in a strategic plan on delivery, right? Yeah, so we'll have another opportunity to talk about deliveries in the future once the strategic plan comes forth.
So I, I support it as, as-is, yeah.
All right, I will move staff recommendation.
Second.
So the comments, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you to everybody. Move on to item number 10, building department plan check contracts. Community Development Director, Rebecca Demming.
Thank you. I'm doing as promised in bringing you back some additional plan check companies that will help supplement our existing contracts to make sure that we have multiple firms on hand, which will provide a checks and balance. I am proposing a contract with Willdan and Inner West, and again, this is for building plan check services on call as needed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do I have any comments from, all right, first we'll open up public comments.
Kathryn Dickerson, the Coach Hillen Project. I am in full support of having multiple plan checkers on board. Just throwing that out there. That's it.
Would it move a project along, you think?
I think so.
Any other public comments? All right, any council comments? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 11 is the general plan update contract extension. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. The original contract that council approved for professional services with MIG is set to expire on March 18th. This proposal extends it to March 18th, 2020, instead of 2019. All of the other terms remain the same, including the budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Open up the public comments this time. Would anyone like to speak on this item? See, now I'll close public comments. Anyone from council? See, now I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
There's a motion, a second. Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 12 is the award of the construction contract for the Desert View Avenue Sidewalk Project, number 2017-19, Public Works Director, Daniel Pores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we had to introduce our Public Works Manager, Nick Hecker. He will be presenting this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and Administration and Staff. I'm here on behalf of staff's recommendation to award the construction contract agreement to Onyx Paving Company, Inc., authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for the Desert View Avenue Sidewalk Project. Back in September, September 27th, 2017, Riverside County Transportation Commission awarded Desert Hot Springs funding for the Desert View Sidewalk Project. This funding is from the SB 821 grant fund, which is 293,000. This project is both sides of Desert View, between Palm Drive and Ferbaina Drive. This is, includes sidewalks, curb, gutters, ADA ramps, new street markings and crosswalks. The idea of this project is give a safe place for, for you to walk through, give you connectivity, and also walkability. The bid process was, we opened up the advertisement for the project on November 18th. We did the opening on December 12, or December 18th. We received eight bids. The bids ranged from 696,000 to just over a million. We checked the references and found that Onyx Paving was actually the lowest responsible qualified bidder. So in conclusion, staff is recommending awarding a construction contract agreement to the lowest responsible qualified bidder, Onyx Paving Company, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement for the Desert View Sidewalk Project, SB 821, with Onyx Paving, in the amount not to exceed 696,000, and approve additional project expenses, which include 10% contingency of 69,600, as needed material testing of 100, or sorry, 10,000, as needed inspection services of 45,000, and cluster mailboxes of 13,000, which brings the total project budget to 833,600. It's pretty much, I could give you the breakdown too, if you guys want, for where the funding's coming from, or anything else you want, but it is in the packet.
I'll open up the questions. I just had a quick question for you. In the cluster mailboxes, do we notify every resident that they're having their mailbox taken away from their?
We do.
We do?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not a big fan of those cluster mailboxes, but I don't have much choice. I think it's mandated by the postal service now. Is that correct?
Yeah, for ADA purposes too, we do, we do have an area where we designate them, so you can, we don't have to wrap around, especially on these projects where we can't encroach too much on the right of way.
I'll open up the public com, oh, sorry, do you have a question for it, Nick?
Yeah, just one real quick one, and I know you're, it's a, it would be vague in an estimate, but have you got a projected start time and finish time?
Yeah, we actually have it through the engineer, which is, we just got it back at start date. We're looking to do the pre-con in two weeks, and then start construction with a week after. And then we're looking at 75 working days is the schedule for completion.
So we're looking April-ish?
Yes.
So with the, this is, this is a much, much, much needed project with all those kids walking up and to Cabot Erickson Elementary, so I'm excited to see this come through. I'd be extra cautious with all those kids still in school going up and down that road.
Actually, we've, we've worked really well with the principal at the school, and we have a good relationship with them because we just did the sidewalk project right there in front of the school.
Well, great, I'm glad to see the expedited timeline, too.
Mr. Betts?
And so this goes up and connects with the sidewalks that are part of the school, right?
That's correct.
There's not going to be a little gap where it doesn't, because it ought to be integral?
Yes, sir.
And is this going to narrow the width of the street in any way?
Certain areas it will. In certain areas, there's three different cross-sections.
Because when the school went there, they significantly narrowed the street, right? They pushed way out into the, into the street. Are we doing the same thing to match up to them, or?
We are matching the, at that intersection, we're matching the east, I'm sorry, the west ADA ramps.
Is the, are the residents going to lose parking along the street?
They won't, no. There'll still be, there'll still be parking.
Okay, so it's widened up to have cars parked on the street?
Yes.
Cars going up and down, no center median though, right?
No median, no.
Okay, great. This is, anybody remember the day when we were fighting like crazy to get sidewalks around here? Jan, you were here, Scott, remember? Yeah, we're getting here, this is wonderful. Good job.
Yes, sir. North and south side.
Both sides of the street, huh? Might just one, isn't that amazing? Good job.
Ms. Pye?
Just wanted to say, you're new, and you got good answers and correct answers. Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, those were good, quick answers. Very good.
At this time, I'll open up the public comments. Anybody like to speak on this item? You know one? I'll close public comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Second. Dang it, I wanted to get in there first. Oh, I should have pushed it before he did.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 13 is the retail facility allowance for select specific plans. Mr. Rainey?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. I'm back, talking about dispensaries. I'm going to call them storefront dispensaries for this report to try to avoid confusion now that we have that worked out. Staff is asking the city council to consider action that will provide storefront dispensary licenses to approved specific plans that have specified cannabis retail component as part of their allowable uses. In our current situation, the city council resolution has limited storefront dispensaries to a maximum of 16 permits. Since that limit was set, the city council and planning commission have approved three specific plans that all allow for cannabis storefront retail. Developers within the specific plans have made reasonable efforts to partner with current storefront dispensary permit holders, yet have not been successful in establishing partnerships. Also of note, each of these three specific plans are larger than 50 acres, they are located miles from the city center near the I-10, and cannabis retail is one of many planned service and retail activities that will be attracting a distinct customer base to their specific areas, with things like convenience stores, markets, medical services, offices, restaurants, and hotels. So staff is asking the city council to consider action to bring about the intent of the cannabis retail use within these approved specific plans, and we are proposing the allowance of one storefront dispensary within each of those three specific plans that are greater than 50 acres and have specified that use within their plan. So with that said, staff recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution allowing one marijuana storefront retail facility, otherwise known as a dispensary, in specific plans greater than 50 acres in size, where such marijuana storefront retail facility is allowed in such specific plan. This concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Take public comments on this item at this time. Anybody like to speak to this item?
Hello again, I'm, I'm back as well. Ryan Fingerhut with High Road Consulting Group. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak. I believe I'm in full support of this, although if, if I could ask a clarification, is this only for currently past specific plans, or is this for all specific plans that meet these requirements? In that case, I'm in full support. Thank you very much.
So Mayor, if I may, that's for all specific plans that meet these requirements.
Any other public comments? Close public comments? Good Miss Savala?
Yeah, I think this is great. I know in the past, when we approved having a storefront retail facility at each of these cultivation sites, I remember that we said, you know, you have to partner with somebody that's holding an existing, at that point, we called dispensary, permit, or the ability to, to open up a dispensary, but I know that over time, you've made a significant effort to try to partner with them, but unfortunately, it just hasn't worked out. So I, I think I'm in full support of this. Clearly, we've already approved you being able to have these on-site, so I'm in full support of it, and once again, these sites are humongous. I mean, 50 acres is huge, so, I mean, we want those type of projects to thrive, and that's just another way to bring people into the city, so I'm in full support of it. So I'm in full support of it.
Mr. Betts?
Excuse me. As Councilwoman Zavala said, you know, we've already approved the concept of this. The problem's been getting the dispensary license. And I think if I had it to do over again and we had, you know, know, if we knew then what we know now, there would be a use it or lose it provision on those 16 dispensary permits that were put out. It wasn't supposed to be high. Grab this thing, stand in line and hold on to it. What if all 16 had held on to them and we had none of the benefit of this business for our residents in the city? I wanna make sure though, that this, when we approved those, we said that these are gonna be separate retail storefronts in a genuine retail setting, not somebody walking past the main security guard and going on in to some corner of the warehouse. So that's all encumbered into this where it has to be in keeping with this is a retail... I mean, one of them, I remember they were actually putting in a regular strip mall with a pizza shop and a this and a that and a hair salon or whatever else they're gonna put. No more hair salons, we got enough hair salons in town. Just joking. Anyhow, okay, so I'm in agreement with this.
Mr. Gardner?
And I would second my esteemed colleague at the end of the DSS's comments that we really should have put something in there on a use it or lose it. And I would like to see us maybe address that in the future so we don't have people sitting on these things and putting them not to use. I'm in full support of this. I just wanna run through real quick, the three locations would be Coachella, Tyson Ranch, and what's the third one?
Desert Harvest.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that's what, it'd be limited to those three and any other ones have to come back to the council. That would be my motion.
It still has to become a specific plan, so all have to come back to the council.
Have to go back to Planning Commission as well before that, before it comes to us.
Accept the motion at this time.
I moved already, I beat you there, sorry. And I even pushed the button before you did, so you're gonna get quicker than that.
Yeah, right.
Nobody said second, so I just seconded.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number 14 is the First Amendment to Professional Services Agreement with HDL Companies for Cannabis Facilities Auditing and Compliance Services. Ms. Kelly?
Yes, Jeffrey Buckheim, the Finance Manager, will be presenting this this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers and City Staff. I'm Jeffrey Buckheim, the Finance Manager. HDL conducts audits on the marijuana businesses and which these audits provide the city with a review of business practices, procedures, internal controls, as well as internal controls of the business, as well as verifying accuracy of receipts and floor plans and square footage, and then provides a review that the businesses are in compliance of state and local codes. HDL also provides updates to the city on marijuana, on trends in the marijuana industry as well as regulations and provides recommendations for our, the city's own procedures. Since October 2016, HDL has actually conducted five audits of marijuana businesses here in the city. These audits have been very informative and actually, in some cases, has found an additional taxes owed to the city. So staff is asking that we continue working with HDL in these audits.
With that said, any questions from council? Mr. Gardner?
You touched on it briefly, but I was just curious if we are recovering enough in these audits to at least cover the auditing costs? Or are we being surprised by under-tax payments or anything along those lines?
We have, there's actually been a couple of audits that have actually recovered taxes due in excess of the cost of the audits.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? I don't know if there's any queue. Open to public comments this time. Would anybody like to speak to this item? See none, closed public comments, entertain a motion.
So moved.
So motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Last item on our agenda tonight is item number 15, ordinance establishing speed limits on various streets based on engineering and traffic study. Public Works Director, Daniel Pores.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The City Council is authorized by the California Vehicle to establish speed limits on local streets. In order to use radar as an enforcement tool, these speed limits must be established based on engineering and traffic survey. Title 10 of the Municipal Court governs speed limits within the city. A new engineering and traffic survey was performed by Hartzell and Crabbe. The detailed summary is actually shown in Exhibit 1, and the following are the changes that are recommended. The locations with conflict speed postings were along Two Bunch Palms Trail on the road segment between Little Morongo Road and West Drive. There was a recommendation to remove a posted 45 mile per hour sign and replace, and I'm sorry, keep the 45 mile per hour sign and remove the 35 mile per hour sign that was posted on the westbound. The locations for new speed limit postings were on Hacienda Avenue between Palm Drive and Uncle Tio Road. The new posting would be of 35 miles per hour. The locations for speed limit reductions were on Hacienda Avenue between West Drive and Palm Drive. It was to reduce 45 mile per hour to 40 miles per hour. And the locations for a speed limit increase were on Little Morongo Road between Mission Lakes Boulevard and Pearson Boulevard, and it'll be increasing from 45 mile per hours to 50 miles per hour. On January 10th, 2018, the Public Safety Commission was presented the current engineering and traffic survey. The Public Safety Commission agreed with the recommendations, did not have any comments or changes. With that, staff is recommending City Council adopt an ordinance by four-fifths vote to adopt an engineering and traffic speed limit study, establishing maximum speed limits on streets within the city of Desert Hot Springs, and amending Section 10.32.010 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code with the reading of the ordinance in its entirety and read by title only. That concludes my staff report, I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any public comments? See nobody standing, I'll close public comments. Mr. Betts?
If it says to remain posted at 40, that doesn't mean we... That means we can go put more signs, right? If there's not enough that say 40?
We can put additional signs, yes, and just not change the sign.
On the section of Palm going south, where we have this safety corridor, I think on the south side, we could use a few more 40 mile an hour signs and maybe not posted on the telephone poles, but on actual, you know, signs that are put in the ground. I don't know how that happened, but maybe it's legal, I don't know. And then the other one we got on Palm Drive from Camino Campanero, Camino Amuntura, it's posted at 45. And I noticed, I think that's the one when you're coming north, it says 45. Then as soon as you go past this 45, then all of a sudden you get this flashing thing that says go 40. Why not just have that one say 40 instead of 45? And then everything's consistent. You jump down from 55 to 40 and it almost looks like a speed trap where you're getting caught with another five miles an hour. You're right on that light when it finally says, when it transitions to 40. Is it possible to take that down another five? I know you gotta follow these engineering studies.
The speed trap is when you go from 60 miles an hour to 30 and it's, you have no slowdown opportunity. The reason it progressively goes down 45 to 40 is it's coming off of, what is it, Danny? Is it 55 or 60?
55.
55 on northbound Palm to 50, then 45, then 40.
This is such a short section. So anyhow, I'll just have to, I know that we got the engineering guidelines we had to follow, but it just seemed that one was odd to me. And then another thing is, is there anything we can do in some of the school zones where we have these high speed limits? When schools not, and we have, you know, when schools and session or kids are present, you're supposed to slow down, but I think we could enhance some of the markings for, to warn about the kids because people are zipping by and I don't think they know when there's school and when there isn't. And I don't think there's adequate markings to designate that you're in a school zone and on every street that passes, an area where there's a lot of school traffic.
We could, does it have a specific school do you know of or any school that you're referring to? That we can look into?
Go look at all of them and if any of them are lacking.
Signs?
Yeah, signs that say, you know, school zone. I think even at those 45, if somebody sees school zone, they're getting a little more careful. So... That's it.
Thanks. Sorry. Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, two things. I would echo part of what Councilmember Betts said as far as larger signs, particularly along Palm. If we're really serious about reducing the speed on Palm, making it safer, we need to have bigger signs saying, you know, reduce speed ahead, things like that nature. It is very hard to find those little teeny signs. And I know we've got new streetlights and a few things coming where we can attach additional signage to, which hopefully down the road would be there. The one on the list here that concerns me though is the speed limit reduction on Hacienda between West and Palm. Right now, it is 45, which I thought was rather high for that area anyway. And we're only reducing it down to 40 and everything else along there, West Drive, everything else is 35. I don't know if it's appropriate to try to push that, but that's still a little too fast, especially when the other side of Palm on Hacienda is 35. You've got a lot of houses on there. You don't have any schools, but it is, there is hard and 45 is a little... It's fast, but 40 is still fast. Yeah, you have the, you go past the entrance to Tedesco Park as well. So is there, I don't know if these are based on a formula, mandatory formula or just a recommendation, but I would like to see if we could take that section of, from West to Palm on Hacienda down to 35.
There is an actual methodology to the actual speed survey, but yeah, the council is at the direction that you can recommend any changes to be adopted.
All right, with no other comments, we'll move on to a motion.
I would move that we accept the recommendations, but with changing Hacienda from West to Palm down to 35 from 40.
Can we, did we just discuss we can do that or we can't do that?
Danny, what is the 85th percentile on that? Before we start discussing changing the speed limit, we have to keep it at the 85 percentile.
Right. This entire study is based on engineering, traffic study by Caltrans. What it sets, it sets that an engineer or traffic engineer sits out there for a specific amount of time, reads a specific amount of vehicles that are non-peak hours. They then plot the entire speeds on an actual curve data and they analyze and set an 85 percentile, meaning 85 percent of vehicles travel less than that speed, 15% travel more than that speed. If you reduce it, then you're gonna have a lot more vehicles traveling at that speed or higher. They also do the mean, the average, the modal, and they take that into account. They also do, majority of the vehicles would do a 10 mile per hour increment and they align it with the graph to make sure that it aligns at the posted speed limit. If you vary, if you vary from that, then you're gonna have majority of vehicles either going under or over, which will then can cause a different traffic pattern. That is the entire segment. That's a quick breakdown of how they do it. They also check alignment, they check traffic history, they check accidents, they check visibility. City Council may authorize to do it and if it's adopted, it's adopted. It just, it is gonna, it can cause different problems.
And I wanna point out too, that once you decide to change the posted speed limit to something other than the 85 percentile, it's no longer enforceable. That's correct. So it is no longer enforceable at that point.
Let's make this easy.
And then the second part of that...
It is your motion, but I know your explanation and I really appreciate it, but can you focus on that with staff and bring it back once they've done? I just wanna make sure legally we're doing something. I don't wanna vote on something that we could legally get ourselves in trouble with in the future.
I agree with you, I can withdraw that.
Is that fair enough? Have him come in, we'll talk about that section and if you guys decide...
Okay, just one more comment then we can get out of here?
Oh, do you have, no.
Yeah, one more comment. The speed signs, they're required by, to be certain size based on the vehicle code.
That's also required by speed limit.
Yeah, we can't make them bigger or smaller, but we can do like we did with the safety zone, put signs in relation to that. But I can't take a speed limit sign and make it as big as our city seal back there or something like that because we want it to.
So if we have specifics on this, you know, do feel free to take them to staff and bring them back if necessary. I just, I don't think that was the intent of this today and I don't wanna get past that because I don't feel comfortable without looking at it. You can talk with city manager about it.
I need to add this to the motion.
The motion's been made to...
Keep right except to pass on Palm Drive.
We just talked, we just talked about speed signs and what you can and can't do. You need to talk to the city staff before...
All right, we'll bring that back as another agenda item, okay?
I'm sorry, so reiterate your motion, please.
Yeah, I would do my amended motion. We'll go with the approved staff recommendation.
Okay, thank you very much. There is a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously. This is the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council adopting an engineering and traffic speed limit study, establishing maximum speeds on streets within the city of Desert Hot Springs and amending Section 10.32.010 of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code. The ordinance will return at the next meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Mr. Mayor, I think that's proof that not even a city council can disagree with city engineers, right?
Well, for legal reasons, I think we should support our staff on this. So just to make sure we're safe, I think we should support our staff on it. So that's only my concern. So with future agenda items, you always know you can talk to the city manager and put those on the agenda. Public comments, anybody did not have a chance to speak at the beginning of the meeting that would like to speak in public comments? See none, we are adjourned to the next meeting, which will be February...
Mr. Mayor, members of...
I'm sorry.
We have one more item.
We have to adjourn to closed session for the final item today. We'll be recessing back here. If you really wanna hang out for about a half hour and hear what happened, which will probably be no repulable action, you're more than welcome. If not, good night.